Calling back to order, the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education meeting. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by the recipients of the Naval Reserve Officer Training Corps, NROTC scholarship, Senior Gabriel Fallis of Luther Burbank High School and Senior Brennan Moore of JFK High School.
Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. Over.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Please stay up here.
Brennan.
Good evening, everyone. I will be reading a few words about our honorees tonight. Gabriel Fallis currently attends Luther Burbank High School and maintain a 3.88 GPA with honors and IB classes. He volunteered many hours as part of the NJROTC program, and he is currently the Titan Battalion Commanding Officer at Burbank. During his time in the program, he received many awards, including the Presidential Fitness Award, the Honor Cadet Award, three Distinguished Cadet Awards, and the Theodore Roosevelt Youth Award. He also scored a nearly flawless score on the Marine Corps Physical Fitness Test with 296 out of 300 points. A dedicated son, Fallis also worked part-time to help his family while attending to his academics and extracurricular activities. Gabriel Fallis is of Native American descent and is registered with the Hopland Band of Pomo Indians. Brennan Moore currently attends JFK Kennedy, or I'm sorry, John F. Kennedy High School and maintain a 3.46 GPA with AP classes. His volunteer work includes Marine Corps JROTC activities, church breakfast, community festivals, and shooting competitions. His positions include squad leader, platoon commander, color guard commander, and commanding officer. An avid cyclist, Brennan Moore completed a variety of sprints and long-distance road races, including a 100-mile century ride. He also worked part-time as a bicycle mechanic and salesman. His superb physical fitness was reflected on his near-maximum score on the Marine Corps Physical Fitness Test, 294 of 300. The NROTC scholarship pays full tuition and a stipend for students to attend a college affiliated with a Naval Reserve Officer Training Corps unit. Recipients participate in officer training as midshipmen and complete Marine Corps Officer Candidate School and a bachelor's degree. Once they complete the program, midshipmen become commissioned officers in the U.S. Marine Corps. Congratulations to our Stoller Student awardees tonight.
Would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to thank everybody for coming out here and supporting us. I want to extend a thank you to my friends and family, my NJROTC unit, some of my cadets are back there, my instructors, gunny, senior chief and commander, for making this all possible, and thank you to my recruiter and my NROTC coordinator. Thank you for helping me along with the process. Thank you to my family for pushing me through hard times. You know, I had some times where, you know, I was procrastinating. I didn't know what I was going to do, but they said, "Follow your dreams," and that's surely what I chose to do today. I also want to extend a sincere thank you to the board members for supporting the JROTC units in Sacramento. I don't know if you noticed, but this is, these programs completely alter the lives of all these cadets, and it builds confidence, citizenship, and patriotism in them. So, thank you so much for supporting us.
I would like to thank all of you guys for allowing me to be here today, and this is a great opportunity to extend my education. I have many people to thank. I'd like to thank the board first and foremost for allowing me to be here, allowing the JROTC units to continue their operations. It's definitely changed me as a leader and a citizen. I'd like to thank my parents for the continuous support, always allowing me to pursue my dreams and always being there, whether it be change classes, to push me to the right direction. The senior marine instructor for my ROTC unit is also here, Chief One Officer Three Reese. I'd also like to thank him. I consider him my mentor. He's definitely encouraged me to pursue my dreams as well and mentor me in leadership. I'd also like to thank my recruiters for continuously pushing me, also for Physically and for the NROTC. I'd also like to thank the NROTC coordinator for helping me go through the board and get this great achievement. Thank you.
I just wanted to express my most sincere gratitude toward those who serve our country. It's not an easy task to do, sometimes difficult. I was just counting the other day that I have now with my godson going into the Navy. He's the fourth generation in our family that has gone to serve this country and bravely so, and I couldn't be more proud than to be a board member today to give you these honors and to give you that respect. I certainly took my bravery in a different direction. I do public service like this, which is nothing in comparison to what you all do for all of us to make sure that we're safe in this country. So, thank you and all my best to you and a great deal of gratitude. Amen.
And I.
Member Wu.
And I echo, I echo the words of my colleague here. You men and women doing this country a great service. We all owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Vice President Hanson.
I'll also just say thank you very much to you and to the folks who train our students. We've got some really incredible programs at our high schools. They're tremendously valued, so you can count on the board supporting them in perpetuity. I know that it does change people's lives. So, congratulations to you. You're a role model, not just to us, but to your fellow students, which is really, really powerful. So, thank you.
I also echo the comments of my board colleagues coming from a family of military members. I know what you endure, so good luck to you.
Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Yes, Madam President. One announcement out of closed session by a vote of five affirmative board members, with board members Arroyo and Wu absent, approved a special education matter identified as OAH case number 2015-090975. That concludes the announcements out of closed session, Madam President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Can I please have a motion?
Remove.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Agenda is passed. Item 7.0, special presentation, 7.1, Student Advisory Council Resolution Presentation. We have the Student Advisory Council Executive Board. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Bonda, President Pritchett, and members of the board. My name is Natalie Rosas Medina. I'm a junior at CK McLatchy High School, current vice president of the Student Advisory Council and future student school board member for the 2016-2017 school year.
Yay.
At this moment.
That takes an applause.
Thank you. At this moment, I will give my colleagues a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Carol Anne Bouton. I'm a senior at CK McLatchy High School, and I'm the administrative coordinator at the SAC.
Hello, my name is Asami Saito. I'm currently a senior at West Campus High School and the current SAC secretary.
Good to see you, Asami.
My name is Connie Benn, and I am senior at West Campus High School, and I am this SAC president.
Hello, my name is Carson Mua. I'm a junior at Luther Burbank High School, and I currently serve as the communications chair.
Hello, my name is Sarah Flores. I'm a senior at George Washington Harbor High School, and I am currently the social media administrator for the SAC.
I, along with the members of the executive board, have come today to present our updated resolution for the next school year. We bring forward this resolution as students dedicated to improving student voice and input in all aspects of our district. My colleagues will be presenting the updated resolution. We hope that our efforts will lead to its approval on the consent agenda for the next board meeting. Thank you.
The Student Advisory Council Associated Student Body Resolution is as follows. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council wants to involve all students to have active participation at youth council meetings. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council represents all 13 high schools. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council empowers Sacramento City Unified School District's student voice by informing youth about becoming active members within their communities. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council creates an authentic youth voice on distinct actions that affect students. Whereas, all students have an associated student body, leadership, or student government class. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council provides opportunities for inclusion and involvement for students district-wide and within the existing Student Advisory Council. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council provides youth council members the opportunity to be more active in the decision-making process of important issues pertaining to high schools within the Sacramento City Unified School District.
Whereas, the Sacramento, the Student Advisory Council creates greater transparency between the Sacramento City Unified School District Executive Board and the students to be able to discuss and/or vote on impending issues that will be, have been discussed at the Sacramento City Unified School District Board meetings. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council creates discussions and debates on district issues in order to give students more power and input in district matters. Whereas, the Student Advisory Council wants to coordinate effective communication between the associated student body, leadership, or student government class of high schools throughout the district, the administration of said high schools, and ultimately the whole district's high school population.
Now, therefore, it be resolved that it is strongly recommended that each school site's student, yeah, associated student body, leadership, student government class, elects or appoints a Student Advisory Council representative for the 2016-2017 school year. Through this resolution, the Student Advisory Council hopes to strengthen youth voice and improve communication between individual school sites and the district.
We already have schools who have approved this initiative. These schools include West Campus High School, Hiram Johnson, Health Professions, John F. Kennedy, Burbank, Rosemont, CK McLatchy, and George Washington Carver. Of course, we anticipate having the approval of all 13 schools in the district. We are awaiting responses from the other schools who have not yet responded. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? We have public comment? Vice President Ryan.
Bean, pardon me. I want to thank you for all being such an articulate and well-prepared group of youth voices. I'm sorry that board member Barry couldn't be here tonight, but our former incredible board member, Asami Soto, is also here. I do wanted to ask a question for you and follow up. You know, you outlined some things that you're really looking to do as core tenants of elevating student voice, both at an individual school site level, but at a district level as a whole. What are maybe one or two things that we as board members can do to help support you in having a stronger voice, a voice that helps inform policy for the district moving forward?
We believe that if Superintendent Bonda or President Darrell, wait, President Christina Pritchett, sorry, would be able to send out like a letter to staff and to see, like, they would be able to have teachers or staff members actually drive more students to Student Advisory Council monthly youth council meetings. So then, more word and participation would be created throughout the, both through parents, staff, and students to create a better initiative to better our district.
So, that's a wonderful and very tangible thing that I think we can do. I think President Pritchett and superintendent Bonda are writing that down right now. Anything else from the other council members? Well, please feel free to give it some more thought and then reach out to me or other board members personally. I very much appreciate everything that you have to bring in terms of insight and recommendations to better serve our students in this district.
Thank you.
Vice President Hanson. Hold on one second. We still have a few more.
We've got more questions. Get back up there. So, I'm curious. I'd like to get a little bit of information. I appreciate you bringing the resolution to us, and I think this actually could be a good template for us to look at when you're going to be our next representative up here. Maybe we can look at ways to have periodic updates so we can make sure that we're hearing and maybe a more formal way from the students. What do you think the reasons are that we don't have representatives from all the high schools now?
I think the large problem is a lot of the schools don't even know we exist. Last year, I didn't know that there was a Student Advisory Council at my, you know, for the school district, and I didn't know that there were representatives within my school. So, I think just spreading the word is the number one to do right now.
And so, are there, you said there are high schools right now who don't have an elected representative?
Yes. I think only four schools are represented in our executive board.
Which schools don't have a rep right now to?
Well, the schools who do have a rep are West Campus, McLatchy, John, or George Washington Carver, and Burbank.
No other high schools have an elected student representative?
Not in our executive board. Other schools do attend our monthly youth council meetings.
Is there an ability to have one student from each high school on the executive board?
That was the intended role for the council, but that is yet to be realized.
So, we haven't done that, but there's a space for all of you to have somebody there?
Actually, I would like to add that there are actually only eight positions on our executive board, and there are 13 high schools in the district. The initiative is specifically to get one on our youth council, which is where more schools are included, and we can have four representatives, four representatives from each of the 13 high schools. On our executive board, we don't have enough room, but we still don't have enough to, we don't, we only have eight positions, but there are still only four schools on our board, on our executive board. So, there still is a lack of diversity even within the executive board.
I see. So, you'd like to at least have the eight positions filled by eight different schools would be ideal, but do we have representatives from all the high schools, at least on your student council?
On the youth council, we don't have all of the high schools, but we do have more than just the four that are represented here in the executive board.
Which high schools don't we have representatives from?
Some of the smaller schools such as New Tech and the Met, we don't get that much participation from Arthur A. Benjamin either.
I mean, I don't want to get anybody in trouble, but they're not going to be, but I do think it's important for us to try to figure out ways to have a representative from every high school, and I understand it's easier for McLatchy, or West, or Burbank, some of the other larger schools to do that. I'm sure it's more challenging for the Met where they've only got 250 or 300 students, or Health Professions, which is in the same position, but that being said, still with that many students, I'm sure there's hopefully at least one who would be interested in participating, and it'd be good for us to know who they are so we can help them figure out a way to do that, and if there's barriers because of transportation to your meetings or whatever else, maybe those are things that we can work on as a board in partnership with you so that we're giving at least an ability for everyone to participate. Because I imagine, and I know that when you were our board member, your mom would come pick you up at the end of a school meeting. I mean, we end at 10:30 or 11:00, you know, there's a lot of things that go into being a representative besides, you know, being a student. So, I think we should be aware of that. So, I appreciate you bringing the resolution and look forward to supporting. Thank you.
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. First and foremost, it's very, it's customary to acknowledge our former board members, so we welcome back Saito, member Saito. Or Saito. So, my question is about the alternative education schools. We have two of them, Capital City and American Legion. Have they also been included in this?
Well, actually, we did have somebody from American Legion last year that was on our board, but unfortunately, he transferred schools. So, it just depends on how many, the number of students actually want to participate with the Student Advisory Council.
How about Capital City? Were they ever reached out to?
We do reach out to like, like, as of like last weekend, two weeks ago, I did reach out to all principals and vice principals, as well as all the ASB classes at each individual school site, and they have not really gotten back to me yet. So, I don't, so I do not, I do not have the answer to your question as of right now.
Okay, that's fair. So, if you are having difficulty with Capital City, that's my area of school, I'd be willing to help you with that communication effort there. Certainly, member Saito knows how to get ahold of me. Please share my information. And the other, the other thing I kind of wanted to question, because the way your resolution is written, is about civic engagement, and, you know, I think that we see too often the lack of civic engagement even in the adult world, presidential elections, local elections, all over, and I want to say it starts when we're children and we're in high school and being active and engaged in the process, whether it's, you know, participating on the prom committee, participating in voting for your ASB representative, whatever that is, but, you know, you gather together as a group and you make something happen. You know, are you, you have plans on how to reach out to high schools, help them with elections, help them with ASB, you know, what the importance is of that and the importance of being represented at this next level up?
What we're planning to do is get a position on the ASB, like on their leadership class to come to SAC so we can have contact with each of the school sites and try to take youth voice just from like a, like a school site level to the district level. Does that answer your question?
Kind of, yeah. I mean, I see some schools maybe struggling a little bit more to understand that that's a role that plays in civic engagement, and so maybe it could be a lack of education that they have, and maybe they're not putting the two and two together. So, I was wondering if you had plans to educate your student body?
When we, as of this year, we had Elections Day for, because today was actually our youth council meeting. So, for our roles, we actually changed some of the duties. So, some duties would include having different, different chairs going to different school sites to actually participate and talk to students at like the after-school assist program or something, or like in middle schools to actually advocate and publicize what the Student Advisory Council does in order to have more people actually come to the youth council meetings and understand that they actually have a voice in our district.
Awesome. And then my last comment is just more of a sense of pride, and I want to say, I think it's been now with you coming in, four consecutive females that are for student board representatives. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I just want to say thank you for your recommendation on the letter, and the superintendent and I will definitely work on a joint letter in getting it out to staff, and I appreciate that. And if you can think of other ideas, I know that Vice President Ryan said to contact us, if you don't know already, which I'm sure you do, all of our contact is right on our SCUSD website, so feel free to email us anytime. Email us as a group, email us as individuals. We'll respond and see what we can do. Some of my questions that I have are, how many members, you said you have this larger board, right? You have an eight, an eight-person elected executive board, correct? Then you have a larger, is it a board or is it?
It's just, it's just youth council members that actually participate monthly, and it's actually four elected positions and four appointed positions on the Student Advisory Council, making a total of eight.
And how many, how many positions, or how many people are on that?
On the youth council meetings? On average, about like 10 to 20.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Has, have the numbers gone down in the past because, or recently, I should say, because it seems like I've been to meetings before and there was, you know, 20, 30 students sitting in the room. So, do, maybe Asami, or if any of you have been on this board for a while, would know if those numbers have gone down.
Well, this is actually my fourth year on the Student Advisory Council, so I've noticed that the numbers have gone down, but at the same time, it's the same amount of schools being represented each time, and it also depends on like how teachers have a really busy work schedule. So, another plan that we have is a request, if you guys could ask for like a bus to come to like the youth council meetings from like, our youth council meetings are actually from 1:00 to 3:00, so if we can like extend it to like 1:00 to 4:00 and have a bus actually transport students, that can maybe create a better engagement and more opportunity for students to come to our meetings.
Because currently, they need to find their own ride to the Serna Center for these meetings, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember when my daughter was on your committee. Who is your leader at the moment in the district?
Like our supervisor?
Yes.
Mark Canaro?
So, the reason why I ask is I'm hoping that I can encourage our district leaders and our board members and superintendent to maybe do some field trips to the schools that aren't participating. I know that these schools are, have government classes or like a student government, and maybe we can go do field trips and talk to these students and get them involved and help you guys out with your membership. I do think that the work that you're doing is very important. So, we thank you a lot for this resolution, and we look forward to having you join our board soon, and we're looking forward to passing this at our next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice President Hanson, you have something to say?
I do. I have a statement to read, just that we have to do at the beginning of our meeting. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, April 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, April 25th at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please fill out a speaker form located in the back of the room and give them to our communications officer, Mr. Ross, prior to the conclusion of that item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit your comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until the item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you. Item 8.0, public comment. Before Mr. Ross calls up our first speakers, I do want to state that we have 30 public comments tonight. Oh, you said, I thought you said 30, sorry. 20 public comments, which is still quite a bit at two minutes each. So, as you come up to the podium, if you are, feel like you're going to be repeating the comment, commenter ahead of you, you could just say, "Same as," or "I agree." That would be fantastic. Thank you.
I'll read the first five names. If people can please line up behind the podium in the order you're called. Peter Lambert, Liz Martinez, Ku Jong, Jim Sang Yaw, Kayon Seo.
Board President Pritchett, Superintendent Bonda, distinguished members of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. My name is Peter L. Lambert. I am principal at CK McLatchy High
I am principal at CK McClatchy High School and president of UPE. I am here tonight in support of Hiram Johnson High School interim principal Cal Phan and on behalf of the Executive Board of UPE, representing 147 supervising administrators on the site level and district personnel. Our executive director addressed you last year at the May 21st, 2015 school board meeting. The message at that time was an alert to this board, to the targeting of administrators by SCTA. At that time, they were targeting the principal at Pacific Elementary with systematic targeting of administrators at Bowling Green Chacon, Hiram Johnson, and several other schools. Since that time, five administrators from those sites are no longer here in the Sacramento City Unified School District, and they were representative of the diverse community that we serve. We would like to reiterate our request that you exercise your right to supervise, hire, and dismiss, if so deemed appropriate, and not to relinquish it to SCTA or any other group in the best interest of our students, staff, and families of the Sacramento City Unified School District. We strongly believe that any monitoring, evaluating, or intervention of any kind is the sole responsibility of the superintendent and the Sacramento City Unified School District staff under the authority of the school board, as outlined in Article 5 of the Collective Bartering Agreement between UPE and the Sacramento City Unified School Board. When the principal at Hiram Johnson was removed, Cal Phan was appointed as interim by the superintendent according to the policies established by this board as it relates to priority schools. SCTA has stated that they will not be satisfied until all administrative staff have been removed from Hiram Johnson. We do not believe that that is the call of SCTA. UPE supports the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education and the superintendent in exercising its right to assign administrators as outlined in your policy. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Board, President of the Board Pritchard, Superintendent Banda, and distinguished board members. I'm Liz Martinez, and I'm assistant principal at CK McClatchy High School. Um, I'm also the high school representative of United Professional Educators. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak up on behalf of Cal Phan, who is interim principal at Hiram Johnson High School. As you know, the American democracy is hammered out in the public schools. I want to emphasize that public education is community inclusive and that Mr. Phan is an icon and a role model in the community of the Mian and Mong people that often quietly goes about the business of serving and leading. Please honor the commitment and the voice of this community and support Mr. Phan as this veteran administrator in his position to which you have appointed him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Superintendent, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Koo Hong. I'm a local Mong attorney, um, a community activist in the city for a long, long time. Uh, tonight, I come here to provide support to my, um, good friend, Dr. Cal Phan, um, the superintendent, the board. You guys hired a remarkable superintendent, um, to do work the board's charge. And I think, you know, the last couple of years, he's done excellent work of that. He's been doing great job. One of which include the appointment of, uh, Dr. Cal Phan to the Hiram Johnson High School as the principal. I come here to let you know that when somebody's falling down, you don't beat them down, you pick them up, you help them out. When somebody's succeeding in not failing, they're succeeding, you want to continue that success, you know, push that person to do better, to improve. Here, we have a school that's in high priority. You guys deal with it for the last four or five years. It's improving academically, staff morale, everything else is going on pretty good. Mr. Cal Phan, or Dr. Cal Phan, was a member of that, uh, success of that effort. This is not the time to pull back that success. Just so you know, we have every faith that the person you hired to do the job for you has another year in, in contract. I wish you guys will continue to extend that far beyond that, because the decision he's making to appoint Dr. Cal Phan is the right decision. It's a decision that the community supports. And on behalf of the API community, being activist and a member of the local, uh, community here in Sacramento, I urge the board to do whatever is necessary to support the superintendent and Dr. Cal Phan at Hiram Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Pritchard, uh, board members and Superintendent Banda. My name is Dr. Chiem Sang Young, affiliated with Papa and Capital and United Human Community and also a State Commission on Asian Affairs, um, also a former employee. I am here in support of your promotion, uh, your consideration promotion of Dr. Cal Phan. He has, um, exercised exemplary, uh, abilities to lead people with compassion, shown great strength at Johnson, uh, have been a member of that force of change that has increased our achievement there, um, and, and, uh, including the, uh, school climate and, uh, what's needed to be done, uh, to raise our students' achievement, uh, in a high, high need area. What works, let's keep it going. Let's not change and let's not go back. So I urge you to support the continued duty of leadership at the, at the school. And, uh, support, uh, Superintendent Banda, your appointment. And the board, uh, would urge you to make that decision quickly and swiftly. Uh, with us tonight, just to show that the community is in support of your decision, uh, I'd like to have the, the members here that in support of Cal Phan to stand. Do so, everybody stand. As you can see, he is a very, very important person to the community, and we urge you again to make the right decision. Let's not prolong his promotion. We are with you and we are with Mr. Phan. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge, uh, board members that have, have served for several years, um, uh, Member Wu, uh, Member Rodriguez, and Member Gustavo Arroyo, who's not here tonight. But you all have served us proudly and thank you for your service and thank you, the rest of you, uh, and we'll, uh, not sure I'll have a chance to come back and say that, so I wanted to make that, uh, personal, uh, commitment and acknowledgement. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Keon Seo. I'm the Union Community Chairman, and I am here representing union communities, uh, in supporting Dr. Phan to become a principal of Hiram Johnson High School. Dr. Phan knows, um, how the children of the community learn, and he also knows how to build the community and communication gap between communities and schools, also parents. We, the union community, strongly encourage that, um, the school board give Dr. Phan another opportunity to, um, become the principal. And we believe that he is the great, um, our future, um, role model for our union community and the community at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our, our, our next five speakers are Tony Lee, Joe Liao, Li Se Yaa, Pham Se Tern, and Ofa Man.
All righty, greeting board members. I, my name is Tony Lee, and I am a former, uh, board president for our United Union Community, uh, in, uh, recent, currently known as, uh, Union Community Service. I am also a licensed, uh, marriage family therapist, uh, with, uh, EMQ Family Service. Like, likewise, I am also here to, uh, voice our community's beliefs and trust in, uh, support with the, uh, our school district's superintendent's decisions, or I should say, meaningful, informed decisions in, uh, appointing, uh, Mr. Cal Phan to a principal at Hiram Johnson. Uh, in my years, uh, back in ISA approximately 2007, when Mr. Cal Phan was first arrived here from the Bay Area, uh, I did have the opportunity, uh, was invited, uh, to be part of the recruiting, uh, panel. I, uh, was involved in an interview panel where we, uh, get to hear what Mr. Cal Phan brought with him. And I was fascinated and inspired by, you know, the vision that he has, that he is willing, uh, bring with him to work with our school principal here. At the time, that's what he was seeking for, was a vice principal. And, uh, soon he was placed at, uh, Kennedy High School and later, uh, was, uh, informed that he did well there and moved along with the school principal to Hiram Johnson and transformed that school to which consider improved, uh, school, improvement school. I also would like to share that in my years, I know that Hiram Johnson has been a difficult, needy high school. I was called upon, uh, back in mid of 2005 to help, uh, mediate with the Mong and Mian student that has continuing conflicts there. And I'm quite aware and I'm just proud that today, that school is in much better shape with, uh, Mr. Cal Phan's, uh, team and all, also his involvement. Thank you, and I encourage all board members to consider that and, uh, help, uh, stand with the superintendent's decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Joe Liao. I am the current president of, um, Union American National Coalition. Um, I am also a former, um, Johnson student, um, of the eighties. I guess I'm an OG now, but in any case, I'm here to, um, encourage and look for, look to your leadership as the board and, um, Superintendent Banda. We want to encourage you to make informed decisions, informed choices in selecting your next principal, which Superintendent Banda has already done. And we would like you to confirm that Mr. Cal, uh, Dr. Cal Phan will be the principal at Hiram Johnson. Here's why he should be. Cal Phan always led with integrity. He al, he's always approachable. He's a, an honest person. He, through collaboration at, at Kennedy, uh, they became a California distinguished schools. And at Hiram Johnson, um, this is, I was surprised and ecstatic to know that, um, in one year, the API school went from 611 to 703. Um, that's impressive. In, in any case, I believe so. Um, I've never seen it done, well, very few times has it been done. And I commend Dr. Phan's, um, leadership, Dr. Phan's collaboration with the community, with the students, with the, his staff members to accomplish that task. So we, the union community, along, along with other Southeast Asian communities, are here to encourage you and urge you to push forward with, uh, Superintendent Banda's, um, decision to appoint Cal Phan as a principal of, um, Hiram Johnson. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Pritchard, board members, Superintendent Banda. My name is Lisa Yang, program director for East Bay Asian Youth Center here in Sacramento. I'm here today, uh, this evening to speak about the support given to me from, uh, Mr. Cal Phan at, uh, Hiram Johnson. Uh, as such, I support Superintendent Banda's initial appointment of Mr. Phan as the principal of Hiram Johnson. In the beginning of 2014, I started working with the youth at Hiram Johnson, particularly those with the support, uh, with a little support motivation to go to school, college, and those that needed extra mentorship and life skills and making good decisions. Mr. Phan supported the presence of our program on campus, which has allowed the youth we mentor to be exposed to various opportunities such as attending EBC's Second Annual Southeast Asian Youth Action Summit at Sac State last year, giving them the opportunity to see a college campus, being mentored by college students, participating in workshops that helps positive shape the minds exposed to the college experience, learning firsthand about the mission outreach program at Sac State. Most importantly, the students receive positive opportunities to meet professional people such as Judge Paul Lowe, the first Mong judge appointed by Governor Jerry Brown, the only Mong, Mong school superintendent in the nation, and many other more role models. In the fall of the school year, a fully loaded school bus of Hiram Johnson students participated in the My Brothers Keepers Initiative at Sac State convening. Students' voices were heard through various agencies about their concerns regarding education, opportunities as youth for employment and public safety in their communities. Last but not least, on April 28th, 2016, the next, next Thursday, more Hiram Johnson students will be able to participate in the Third Annual Southeast Asian Youth Action Summit at Sac State. Again, I appreciate Mr. Cal Phan, and I hope these opportunities will continue to exist for the students at Hiram Johnson. Finally, I want to say again that these are important things. I know it's largely possible for the students at Hiram Johnson because of the support from Mr. Cal Phan. I say this to, to say that I know Superintendent Banda has made the right decision to appoint Mr. Cal Phan as principal at Hiram Johnson. I sincerely hope you make the right decision to keep someone like Mr. Phan as principal. I appreciate your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for your time and your commitment in serving your constituents. Um, my name is Pham Se Tern. I am a first-generation college student. I am also a proud parent of two young children, one who will be entering the Sacramento Unified School District next year in the fall. I stand before you all today with over 100 members from the Union Community who are also all of your constituents. And, um, during the last board meeting, there were a number of interim principals who were approved to become permanent principals. And unfortunately, um, Mr. Cal Phan was not on that list. And so I'm here today because I have worked in the nonprofit world all of my professional career, and I've had the opportunity to train over 300 university students from Sacramento State who has served as mentors and tutors both at Will Seawood and Hiram Johnson High School. Uh, Mr. Cal Phan has been instrumental in making sure this collaborative worked and that we continue to help foster student leadership, close the achievement gap, as well as address these, um, educational disparities for such a diverse student population. So it baffles me as to why, um, someone like Dr. Cal Phan, who was a refugee, who fled his war-torn country, came to the US, who learned English as a second language, um, has earned a doctorate degree, and someone who has dedicated almost 30 years of his life in the education field, why he, um, is not promoted to become principal and to continue this continuum of care? I have also been in the healthcare, um, industry and the nonprofit, and we believe in this continuum of care. And I think that applies, um, just as much in the education field. So my question to you all is, can you provide some sort of insight as to where your reservations are and, um, and what the next steps may look like for us?
Yes, please.
Well, the, thank you so much for your question. This is not a back and, back and forth, but I, I do want to let you know that, uh, that he's still in the This is not a back and forth, but I do want to let you know that he's still in the process, so we're not, we haven't made a decision yet, but the decision is pending very shortly.
Okay.
And so you will know that, and there will be some information and documentation around why the decision was made, but we haven't made that final decision yet, and we're looking forward to doing that very soon.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for giving us some more insight and for letting us know what to expect. I appreciate your time, and I, you know, want to make sure that we're able to inform you guys and you guys are able to inform us. So I will follow up with an email to each one of you guys, and I hope that I will be receiving a timely response. Thank you.
As our next speaker is approaching the microphone, if our next five speakers can please line up behind her. Donisha Carlos, Carolyn Nutter, Travis Radowick, Shane Sheddenhelm, Oscar Rivera. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ofa Man. I am president for the Tongan, Tofa of Sacramento, serving the Tongan and the Pacific Islander community. I also sit on boards like Asian Pacific Under Public Affairs APPA in Capital, and have been working with the commission by the governor for the Asian Pacific Under Public Affairs for California. And that's when I have not been active. Ten years ago, I was one of the advisory committee for the school board. It has changed over time, and it's so nice to see my colleagues, Alex, there informing me that there has been a great change since I've been around, and I saw it tonight. I saw that you have empowered the students to witness the students coming forward to do their own presenting their resolution, and that I'm really proud. I can see that the sparking change have evolved as your mission is to interrogate approach to improve school climate, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I want to continue to see you continue with the equity and excellence in the climate for the school. Awesome, awesome, I just want to say that. And here tonight, I'm here because I'm aware that Dr. Fan's tenure at Kennedy High School greatly contributed to the school being recognized by the state as a distinguished high school. While at Hiram Johnson, Dr. Fan and the administrative team worked collaboratively with the staff, student parents, and community members to increase the school's API score by more than 60 points. By any standard, this score is unique and impressive. I'm here to ask you to support having Dr. Fan remain as permanent principal. Thank you.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda. My name is Donisha Carlos, and I'm a proud parent of students who have attended and are attending schools in this district. My son graduated from Sac High last year, and my granddaughter is currently attending PS7, an independent charter school authorized by this district and located in a district facility. It is the facilities that I wanted to address today. In 2006, the district had a facilities master plan. Part of that plan was ranking the facilities from worst to best. The PS7 facility was ranked second, second worst facility in the district on that 2006 master plan. The worst facility was the abandoned site at 16th and N downtown. In fact, even the old Marshall School was ranked a higher quality facility than PS7. The second-best school from this 2006 master plan was Health Professions High School, which makes sense since the school was built in the early 2000s. Then, as you know, the district did a new facilities master plan in 2012, prior to going to voters for approval of the bond measures Q and R. This new 2012 master plan ranked facilities on an index between zero and 116. On this new index, PS7 scored 12 out of 116. But more surprisingly, Health Professions High School scored just eight out of 116. Given that the facilities master plan is used to identify priorities for bond funds, my concern and my question for the board is, how is it that a school that was ranked second-best school in the district in 2006, Health Professions, now rank as a lower-quality facility than PS7, which in 2006 was the second-worst facility in the district? This does not make sense. And if this 2012 plan is being used to direct resources to schools, how can we make sure that it reflects the true quality of the facilities our students are experiencing every day? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carolyn Nutter, and I'm the training director with ITAP. I'm here this evening to give you an update on the situation regarding financial aid for the commercial electricians. Since we first brought this before the board on March 17, I haven't been able to obtain one meeting with the superintendent just this past Monday. I was surprised to learn that he had not yet had the opportunity to investigate my resolution to this matter. Although we had had the opportunity to discuss, we have not yet come to any resolution. At the conclusion of the meeting, he was going to investigate with HR the effects of this resolution. I have attempted to reach him, however, have not been successful. I understand that he is an extremely busy man, and I am here to ask you, as members of the board, to direct him to raise this on his list of many, many priorities. One of the classes directly affected, as advertised right here in the Charles A. Jones catalog, I guess it's along, it's right here.
We can get it on.
Graduates next Friday, and they have only received one of their three promised payments. Could you imagine beginning a program, approved for financial aid, and then only receiving part of the funding that was promised to you, and not having received a single communication or notice from the school you were registered with? This is what these gentlemen and their families are experiencing, and this is taking away from their educational experience, as we have spent timeless, many hours discussing this situation and attempting to convince them to trust in this system, to trust that this board will not allow this injustice to take place. If they complete next week without having their financial aid as promised, that burden does fall onto the shoulders of the district. I would like to direct your attention to the spreadsheet that has been provided to you of the outstanding balances. You can see here, outstanding to date is $70,521.17 that is owed to the gentleman who have been enrolled in this program as they have been denied their last two disbursements. Please assist these gentlemen and their families and put this concern to rest by directing the superintendent to accept the proposal as submitted and pay these students what is currently owed to them immediately. Are there any questions that I can answer for you at this time?
Not at this time. Thank you, Ms. Nutter.
Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Travis Radowick. You've heard from me a couple of times in the past few weeks. I might be starting to look familiar by now. I'm here tonight on behalf of my fellow classmate, Armando Gomez. He wasn't able to make it due to a parent-teacher conference that he has to be at tonight, so I'd like to say a few words on his behalf. I'm a father of two boys, seven years old and seven months old, and also a fully registered Charles A. Jones student, attending the electrician program at ITAP. It's been 67 days since I started the program and have not received any notice from Charles A. Jones about being cut, getting, being cut from getting funding while attending ITAP. I've not received any phone calls, any emails, or even any letters regarding this situation. This issue has brought on new struggles for my family and myself. I'm constantly stressing about my future due to not knowing how to pay for this program. This is an issue that not only affects me, but is also affecting my wife and two sons. I am asking for your help in having this issue resolved as soon as possible. Thank you for your time. And I'd like to thank you guys again for the chance to speak and tell our story, and I hope to hear from you soon. I'd like to invite you guys all out to check out the campus and meet the people that this is affecting, because it is very real for us. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. President Banda, or Superintendent Banda, excuse me. My name is Shane Sheddenhelm, and I'm sure I look familiar to you as well. You've seen me a couple of times. Two weeks ago, we were here, and we were asking for communication for our proposed resolution to our funding issue. We spoke, and we were given about an estimated time of a week for a response, and as students, we still have not heard anything. So I mean, I think it would be just a due courtesy to send out maybe an email, or a phone call, or anything, just to let us know what's going on. It's very hard to continue to keep going on. I'm definitely missing my night job tonight, so I can be here tonight and speak in front of you guys. So if you guys can expedite the process and give us an answer, whether it be yes or no, we need an answer so we can move forward. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, President, Vice President, Superintendent, and members of the board. My name's Oscar Rivera. I'm also a student at ITAP. You know, when, this has been like, I have three children and a sister-in-law that live with me and my wife, and I knew when me and my wife discussed me going to school that we were going to incur some debt, but we didn't plan on incurring the whole debt. So when I filled out all my financial aid stuff, the decision was made that we could do the debt we would incur, and you know, as a husband and as a dad, we try and plan things so that our children and our families don't suffer unneeded hardships. Tonight, my two girls, ages 10 and 13, are playing softball, and I have to be here, which is fine, because we're working through this, you know, but I'm missing their softball games. For me, I just, you know, I'm here on behalf of students that couldn't be here also, but we're just looking for some solution, something that works for everybody. That's basically it. We're just, you know, we're students of Sacramento Unified, and I think you guys are overseers of that, so we're turning to you and asking you what can we do with our situation, you know, because basically our hands are, we've fulfilled our commitment to be in school every day. You know, I leave Lode at 5:15 to be in Sacramento, start to be on time, 15 minutes early to start school, and I've lived up, you know, I'm doing my part. I just want CAJ to do the part they said they were going to do. And whatever the process is to notify us, you know, I haven't heard anything other than when I went down and spoke with Mrs. Galloway that she says you're no longer affiliated with us. And had I not gone down there, I would have never found that out. So I don't know if they need phone numbers, or email addresses, or whatever to just let us know, keep put us in the loop. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Cody Nelson, Stephen Mitchell, Caleb White, Nikki Malevsky, and LaShania Brazil.
Hello, my name is Cody Nelson. I graduated the program in October of last year. I just want to show up tonight to be a testament to the program. I couldn't have done it without the financial aid and the Pell Grant that was given to me through the district. It would have been just too much debt to incur. And before I went to the school, I really had not very many job skills, and since I graduated the program, I got a very great job within two weeks of graduating, make more money than I've ever made in my life, and have a career for a long time, and just want to be a testament to how good the program has been for me and my family. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, President, Superintendent. My name is Stephen Mitchell. I'm a disabled Iraqi war veteran, a member of, a student of Charles A. Jones Career Education Center, and I'm signed up at ITAP. I was approved for the Pell Grant to attend, and unlike the rest of my fellow students, they are trying, my school is paid for through the GI Bill. The Pell Grant money that I was hoping to get, that I was approved for, was to help with bills as far as like my daughter going to daycare, gas money, get back and forth to school, and just stuff that, day-to-day expenses. And I say, for me, it's different from them, but at the same time, I'm here on their behalf too, because they go through a lot. They've had to quit jobs to come to school, they're trying to get unemployment, they're having to go through that hassle, and it's just, my problem was, I started, I went to sign up on January 13. My class started January 18. So I had to jump through hoops with CAJ to get into the program. And when I talked to Ms. Galloway, she said, oh, we're not affiliated with them, and my question for her was, well, if you knew that was going to happen in December, why would you let us sign up for school in January? If you knew you weren't going to carry the program and you weren't going to provide funding for that? So I don't understand that personally, but maybe you could give me insight on that, or come to some kind of solution? Because like I said, there's a class that's going to graduate next week, and they're still, they don't have all their money, and I don't want them to be pushed out, and then they have all that debt to worry about when they get out of class. My class, we have till the end of July, but I don't think we should have to wait that long to find a solution to the problem. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
My name's Caleb White. I'm here again to feel myself at the mercy of the board here. As the fellow guys have already explained, you know, we got a real big situation on our hands with the CAJ school that we're going through, you know, and I'm a CAJ student as well. It's very serious for us, you know, we, you know, especially with myself and four of the students in my class, we're getting ready to graduate here at the end of the month, you know, and it's just real tough, you know, being, going into a contract with CAJ, and then halfway through, getting duped, you know, and rug pulled right out from under us, you know? And all we're asking is just to honor the contract, the same way we've honored our part of the bargain and honor our contract, you know, going to school every day, showing up, you know, even with very little money, regardless of whatever hardships come aboard to us, you know? And it was crazy, because I seen a very honorable little cadet come up here and say how he strives to follow his dreams, you know? And guess what? I want to do the same thing. I just want to be able to follow my dreams, you know? And with this situation that's been put at hand, it really puts me in a very tough bind, very, very hard place, you know? And so all I ask is just, you know, honor the contract, the same way we have, you know, and just come to a little resolution like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Malevsky, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association. Tonight, I want to address two topics, both of which I've addressed before. First, our wage re opener, and then the selection process for the principal of Hiram Johnson. With regard to the wage re opener, you know that we are now scheduled for fact finding on May 2. It is unfortunate that this board has not acted in a way to address the growing teacher crisis by honoring the commitment made by the superintendent and the chief human resources officer, Consey allows personal agendas to stand before the needs of today's students. The district is inarguably in the best financial position in its history. Revenues have increased sixty, oh, sorry, 67 million over the last three years, while the cost of insurance for SOTA retirees has dropped 17% since 2010. The district has underspent 3.6 million in salaries and benefits for teachers this year because it is using substitutes to fill vacancies that should be staffed by fully credentialed teachers, and is expected to end this year with a surplus, growing its unrestricted reserve fund to over $40 million, approaching 10% of your overall budget. That's five times what's required by law. And yet, this board cannot agree to spend less than a million dollars to implement the agreement made by the superintendent and Consey McCarron regarding the much-needed 5% increase for teachers. Just today, the district requested, and we agreed, to raise the placement on the salary schedule for a newly recruited teacher with a credential in Mandarin and math, who felt justified in asking for more than the current salary schedule would allow. Other applicants and current district staff deserve the same consideration. While this board continues to exacerbate the hiring crisis by failing to act, other districts are taking advantage of our low salaries to actively recruit our experienced teachers. Just last week, San Juan held a job fair. At San Juan, teachers bargained a 4.5% wage increase in 1415, and another 3.5% increase this year. And they'd already reduced class sizes, and in more than just K through 3. So not surprisingly, by all reports, the San Juan event was well-attended by dozens of Sac City teachers. The primary attraction, the 11 to 32% salary increase a teacher would be eligible for, as well as the perception that San Juan's leadership actually values their teachers and supports what we do in the classroom. It is unfortunate that you now seem to need to rely on a third party and weeks more delay to direct you to do the right thing. Your failure to act is duly noted. In a similar vein, we are waiting to see how the board will respond to the crisis at Hiram Johnson. At the last meeting, I showed you the blank sheet, the district's website concerning selection process for principals. A deeper dig reveals the board policy, which I provided for you tonight, that sets forth a transparent selection and interview process with comprehensive input at all levels and stages of that process. As I've said many times before, this is an issue of the process and not about the principal. If you look at number six, in your board policy, the superintendent is supposed to establish an interview committees and panels that may include, but not be limited to, certificated employees, classified employees, parents, secondary students, community members, and those unlike jobs. If following, if the superintendent had followed your own district policy that we've been advocating for, then whoever was chosen would be given legitimacy of being chosen through a transparent process and inherently included the voices of the community. The gallery walk process, where comments were put on sticky notes and are put up on flip charts for everyone to see, that was used at Hiram Johnson and other sites contradict this policy. And perhaps, just as importantly, it really did a disservice to the interim principal and the community. We've asked for a copy of all the comments, and were told that you would be provided them too. Why the superintendent felt compelled to put the interim principal through that is unfortunate, and it lacks compassion, and did nothing to advance the interests of the students and educators or the Hiram Johnson community. It was also duly noted that the superintendent did not even bother to be there that evening. But now that it has happened, and it's time to initiate a fully engaged process that's set forth in your board policy, that will ensure that the next principal at Hiram Johnson and at all, all of our schools go through a transparent interview process according to your policy. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Pritchard, Superintendent Banda, and board members. My name is LaShania Brazil, and I'm with the Black Parallel School Board Executive Board Member. Tonight, I just would like to address a couple of updates from the Black Parallel, on behalf of the Black Parallel School Board. First, on April 2nd, 2016, the Black Parallel School Board held a very successful education forum titled "21st Century Education and Its Impact on African-American Students." Our outstanding presenters were among the following: Dr. Ricky Green, Sacramento State University of Ethnic Studies; Wesley Marshall, Vice President at Grant High School; Ms. Kayla Taylor, teacher; and Dr. Tiffany Smith Simons and Robert Perry Youth. And then, secondly, Black Parallel School Board submitted its recommendation to the district's LCAP Advisory Committee for closing the opportunity gap, excuse me. One recommendation is to hire six onsite restorative justice workers to the following sites: American Legion, Hiram Johnson, Rosemont High, Rosa Parks, Leah Tata Floyd, and John Steele. And then, lastly, I would like to conclude by stressing that we need to move our district into a 21st century multicultural education system, a high-quality, cultural, responsive, and community-based learning community. Thank you again, Ms. LaShania Brazil, with the Black Parallel School Board.
Thank you.
We have two more comments on 8.0 from Darlene Anderson and Victoria Camargo.
Good evening, Superintendent Banda and Ms. Pritchard, Board President, and all other honorable board members. I'm happy to be here tonight. I was happy to be at the LCAP meeting last night, which I found to be a little distressing, especially for the African-American community. I don't believe that people really understand the purpose of public education, and especially in the African-American community, because it's so punitive. A lot of families find themselves in the process of, you know, CPS, or SARBS, or student study teams, but they're really not happy. And so I think they find themselves hiding from the district, trying to limit the, you know, the involvement. So I, I've noticed that African-American parents really don't show up at the community meetings. And there was a few. I think there was maybe about four or five parents, but there last night. But they were mostly staff members. It was totally packed with staff members, and Honorable Daryl Wu, he was there. I was glad he was there, because it showed that he has a commitment to see change. And the superintendent was there, but he didn't stay the whole time. But what I will say is, in our community, we need the PTA. And the PTA stands for Lose Their Council, simply because the schools really don't understand the importance of sending a member to the district level. And so, at that PTA meeting that they had last time, they were like four, maybe four or five schools represented, but there were 14 schools that should have been there. And if the close closet, closes, this district will really suffer, because this district still has 70% poverty, and those kids don't have uniforms. And I will say, the importance of sharing with those members is critical. What I will say is, I looked at the Smarter Balance data, and thank you for putting the link there, where I could see that there are very few 10th, 11th, and 12th graders who are African-American that are scoring at or above the 50th percentile for reading and math. And I think it's important to have those conversations on how we're going to ensure that all kids meet those, you know? Because my son did it, and he's autistic, and if he can do it, I think that all children can. But, you know, public education has to be public, and people have to feel like they're worthy of a basic education. And I think that that's where we really need to work towards, engaging more families, and allowing more, and teaching, teaching families how to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Camargo.
Hello. It's been a while since I've been up here. My name's Victoria Camargo. I'm kind of glad, glad I was the last one up here, so I got to hear quite a bit. I've been a couple, to a couple of those sticky note things, and I don't see what's wrong with them. We've got a couple really good principals. I don't see why our principal at Johnson's getting picked on, or, excuse me, our interim. He's a really good principal. He's the best one we've had at Johnson. I may not have gone it to Johnson, but I'm now a Johnson mom. I have my third child there. My fourth one will be there next year. My husband's an alumni, his family's alumni. I'm a wrestling mom. When I go to Johnson, I have about 100 kids there. So he's the type of principal that, he says he has an open door, he's not joking. You can literally go up, touch his door, it opens, and you can talk to him. You see him in the hallway, he talks to the kids, he talks to the parents. If there's a fight or an argument, he doesn't argue with the kids, he doesn't roughhand with them. He sits them down, he discusses it with them, he gets to the issue. He finds out what is going on. Most of the time, it has nothing to do with the children. It has something to do with something that happened some other time. And he gets to the root of the problem. He's not afraid to let you know about his history. He's not afraid to let you know he came from a poor background. He's humbled in his upbringing. He's the type of principal you want at that school. And you know from the principal we've before, I'm very outspoken on what I want and what I don't want there, because that was not what I wanted. And out of all of the principals that we've ever had at the schools, the last, the two that my kids, the two schools my kids are at now, they've been voted by the sticky note system outstanding. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Vice President Ryan.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to address the ITAP students. I know that we've lost many of them, probably due to work obligations and family obligations, but I think you deserve to have a response to three board meetings in which you've came and made your concerns heard. I want to first recognize that I know that many of you are hanging your hopes and dreams on a better opportunity and equality of life for your families on this program. And I also recognize that you've invested time and energy in the coursework you've taken so far. That is, to me, devastating, given the circumstances that you're now grappling with. I also want to say that this is very complex, because there has, at a federal level, been a myriad of changes recently on accreditation, on the ability to distribute Pell Grant aid, which is, in fact, federal financial aid. So in many cases, it's not the district wanting to withhold aid, but trying to navigate these federal changes. Irrespective of that, when we say to you, we're going to come to you with a solution, or talk about how we can move forward, you deserve to have a timeline met. And so, in addressing you right now, I ask my fellow board members to support a timeline for a discussion of what concrete next steps will be taken, assessment of what we can do and what we can't do in this circumstance, and a commitment to move posthaste, because I think it would be tragic if we were still talking about this six weeks down the line.
Thank you, Vice President Ryan, and I concur with you. As the ITAP, ITAP members were up here, I was speaking with the superintendent, and we'll get something out to you, and we'll work on a timeline. I know that this is very complex, and your stories are very touching. And so, we'll work out something and get back to you soon. All right. Item 9.0, Public Hearing. 9.1, we're going into public hearing. Consideration: A public notice of Unified, United Professional Educators, UPE. Initial Proposal to Sacramento City Unified School District Regarding Sunshine Reopeners for Salary and Benefits for 2015-16, and Sunshine Reopeners for the Contract Negotiations for 2016-17. Remember.
Good evening again. President Pritchard, Superintendent Banda, and members of the Sacramento City Unified School Board of Education. I am Peter L. Lambert, President of UPE, representing 147 certificated supervisors, including site principals, assistant principals, instructional coordinators, and other district office personnel. I am here this evening to sunshine the UPE bargaining interest for the 2015-16 reopeners in salary and benefits, and the 2016-19 full contract negotiations to include total compensation, salary, and benefits, as well as all contract language. You should have received a copy of those interests. UPE fully understands that the current board is not responsible for the unfunded health care liability, the unfunded pension liability to STIRS and PERS, the vacation liability. Those fall on the shoulders of those board members from the past who sat in your seats. However, unfortunately, you are left with the mess and the responsibility and obligation to your constituents to fix it, or kick the can down the road for the coming, for those coming behind you. It is extremely frustrating to see, to see those things, like interest payments and legal costs, simply go out the door and not towards educating our students. Consider that interest payments alone could fund thousands of computers in classrooms, or go towards paying down the unfunded liabilities. It's not a solution, but it's a start. We want you to know that UPE is here to help. Our members have the responsibility to oversee the educational programs of the district, and to monitor our designated budgets to stay within the fiscal limits that we are provided with. Over the years, UPE has been there to provide solutions to district problems and to help out when needed. Again, in 2014, UPE, SEIU, Teamsters, and CSA were approached by the district and asked to consider concessions in the use of CalPERS to administer their health care account. Through those negotiations, through the negotiation process, those four groups stepped up to help address the district's budgetary problem. The result was a savings of six, of approximately 6 million going forward. One-third of the savings was to go to the district's unfunded liability, one-third to the restoration of positions, one-third towards salary and benefits within each of the bargaining groups. Also, UPE participated with the, with other bargaining groups in the district-sponsored interest-based bargaining training, as well as the public sector classification study. We look forward to the results of the public sector classification study and our continued interest-based negotiations with your district representatives. Additionally, we look forward to working with district staff through the contract and total compensation package to assist in bringing the best and brightest administrators to the Sacramento City Unified School District, and then training, supporting, and retaining those administrators who serve the district and the students within. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment. Do we have any board? Nope, okay, perfect. We're going to end public hearing. All right. Item 10.0, Consent Agenda. We have a, hold on, we're not ready for that yet. We have a public comment on item 10.1L.
We actually have two public comments on 10.1L from Darlene Anderson and Angie Sutherland.
I wanted to talk about the work that was put into the GATE presentation to the governing board, because I didn't see the same level of work put into special education. And I know that students in special ed tend to have more behavior problems, but the district uses the SARB office, but there's no legislation legally around the SARB. And so whatever happens over there, it's kind of like the Wild, Wild West. And it used to be worse, because they used to go in and film when they went into people's homes, but now they still have the same hearings. And when people are used to documenting people, that becomes the purpose. And so, when children are having behavior problems in this district, I've learned, going through an Office of Administrative Hearings process, that it becomes the student's fault, and the student never had the opportunity to learn the task. And OAH really just kind of like went right in with the district and explained how come the student had maladaptive behaviors. Well, this is not a zoo, and children are in this district to learn. And when people ask you questions like, "What is your..." And when people ask you questions like, what is your real purpose for being or helping or supporting another parent? What is the real, what are you really trying to achieve? And I say, well, that student's there to learn, and hopefully will have an opportunity to benefit from the public education that they are, you know, in. And so, it's kind of like difficult. Some people don't have a great time in this district, and some people do. And some people are in wonderful environments, but some people are in environments that are not happy at all. And I would like to see how this district plans on, you know, working through this so that all children have a basic opportunity to learn. And, and if you could do it with GATE students, you certainly should be able to do it with the kids in poverty. Thank you.
Good evening, Angie Sutherland, and I'm a parent at Hollywood Park Elementary, and I appreciate the updates to this board policy regarding the lessons learned and what the district is planning to do going forward. My thoughts are that these efforts that we're making for the GATE students need to be made for all the students with high needs, and all the LCFF-targeted groups come to mind with that. For instance, increasing the professional learning opportunities for GATE is planned, creating wraparound supports for those identified as highly, high-gifted, enhancing communication, differentiating the practices and strategies of teaching. That is so critical, not just for this group, but for, for other groups as well. And then, just continuing to build the capacity around the, the site administration, it says here for, to advocate and support students. So, we need to put this effort, expand this effort to the students who need the most support. So, I do support this policy, but I think that more effort should be put to the other students as well, and I agree with everything that Ms. Anderson said as well. Thank you.
Okay, and before we vote, I'm going to ask for items 10.1A and 10.1O to be polled from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Remove.
Thank you, second. Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All in favor, yes. All right, thank you. 11.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. 11.1, Sparking Change: An Integrated Approach to School Climate.
Good evening. President Pritchett, board members, Superintendent Banda. It's my pleasure to share Sparking Change, SCUSD Integrated Approach to Improving School Climate. I think I got it. Look at that, perfect, thanks, Dan. All right, I'd like to start by sharing Equity and Excellence Commission Report, some findings. This was a 27-member team. It consisted of board members, teachers, union leaders, education reformers that presented a report to the Secretary of Education last year, and some of the things they found were was our education system does not distribute opportunities fairly. Students in high-poverty areas are getting an education that approximates that of a developing nation. No other developed nation has the odds so thoroughly stacked against its children. And it went on to say that the inequities in our system have the impact of that of a permanent natural recession, actually. So, these were strong statements that sounded an alarm, and when we wrote Spark, we very much took these into consideration. So, what is Spark? Spark is a framework for thoughtfully integrating SEL, PBIS, and restorative practices. It basically, it stands for, the S is for SEL, the P, Positive Relationships, the A, Analysis of Data, the R, Restorative Practices, and the K, Kindness. It's an approach that brings coherence to equity, school climate, and board policy. It addresses opportunity gaps, we'll talk about that, and really levels the playing field by improving school climate on our campuses district-wide. The emphasis is really keeping kids in school. This comes through our admin regs. We are just about finished writing the administrative regs that go with the school district's discipline policy. The regular use of data is going to be used to address disproportionality, and we're going to talk about that in just a moment. Spark really focuses on elevating student voice, creating greater sense of community. It does address implicit bias and explicit bias. It builds the SEL core competencies. There's a new mantra we will be excited to share with you in just a moment. And it places an emphasis on restorative practices, repairing harm when wrongdoing happens and restoring relationships. And obviously, a big part of Spark is shifting this focus to developing the gifts, talents, and interests of all kids. So, specifically, how does Spark reduce disproportionality in discipline? This is about the administrative regs. All schools will receive training on the new discipline policy. This will be through a series of summer equity retreats, Spark Retreats. We will have a, a group from every school represented. All schools will examine their discipline disproportionality every month as part of Spark. We know the board took action on suspension, because suspension has some extreme negative effects. We know that schools that suspend highly are actually less safe instead of more safe. We know that once a student is suspended, they're far more likely to end up in the juvenile justice system. We know that suspension often doesn't produce any form of accountability for the victim, for the wrongdoer, or for the community. So, we are excited to unveil restorative practices in a systematic way through Spark, really focusing on repairing harm and restoring relationships. Also, part of this, the community would be regularly engaged to share data and to share what each school is doing to address their, any kinds of disproportionality, to gather input and hear feedback about their plans. So, this is a theory of action page, and it's, it's trying to get at changing how we change as a school district. You know, it should be noted, when, when we started this work in the fall, we were working with some partners, and those partners, we were really looking for a large grant to help fund this work and, or foundation money, to really try to integrate SEL, PBIS, and restorative practices. It really hasn't been done successfully anywhere in the nation, and we're eager to take a stab at it. And so, our partners were really eager, but they went from visionary, really, to vendor as soon as the opportunity for funding dried up. So, we were left in this inevitable position of, we've got to do something about this in SAC City on our own, what can we create? So, this theory of change basically says, how do we take all these inputs, those boxes you see at the top, everything from National Equity Project, who we've worked with, CASL, National Children's Defense Fund, how do we take all of those pieces of our learnings, invest in our own SAC City people, funnel that information, and then turn it into a series of equity retreats over summer, have Spark coaches that support sites, develop restorative practices, PBIS and SEL, really think thoughtfully about our data and how to study that data and lead difficult conversations at the school site. We really want to invest in our own people in an integrated way that builds it our way meaningfully from the ground up. Some of the partners I might mention, who we were consulting and talking with, have business plans that take as many as 11 steps, and step one is four days of training. And when you've got over 60 schools in the district, there's no way you can ever get to capacity, of course. So, we've got to do it on our own. So, the next page is looking at Spark Support to Sites. What does that look like? So, all certificated staff members and classified staff members would be taking a staff survey. Our principals took this yesterday at their principal meeting. The level of site support that a site receives would be based upon commitment, their interest and their knowledge about Spark principles. Every site will have a Spark team trained over the summer, like I've said. Spark site leads and teams will be supported by coaches throughout the year, all right? All sites will get something, no sites will get nothing. And we know in our district, sometimes we have a problem with systemic change. I think one of the beautiful things about Spark is, it is systemic. It is all schools participating. No one would be opting out. This is an example of some of the survey questions, and you can just glance at it, but you can see it's really looking at things like, how do we view struggle? Is there an understanding that punishment is not the answer, that punishment often produces unintended results and consequences? What responsibility do we, as the educators, take for educating all kids? The survey, which you do not see on this slide, but goes on to find out each employee's commitment to a multi-day summer equity retreat, as well as how committed they are to improving school climate. We are really looking at meeting people where they are at and adding value, so very much a value-added approach. So, what would this turn into? How do we organize for Spark? We would have three main groups of schools. There would be an exploration group, a fusion group, and a cohesion group. Our exploration group is going to be our entry group N. These schools would be gently wading into the pool. There'd be a high, high SEL focus. There would still be Spark leads and coaching support, as well as a summer equity retreat. These schools would really develop their foundational skills to go deeper in the work. Our fusion schools are current schools who are practicing PBIS. Those schools, we would want to really build up their restorative practice skills, so we would be really infusing support in the area to build their restorative practices. And lastly, our cohesion schools, this would be the dive-in to the deep end of the pool group of schools. There would be intensive summer support, equity retreat, intensive coaching, intensive work around equity. The numbers that we are looking at, we could support about 18 schools at this level, about 10 at the fusion level, and in the 40s, probably at the exploration level, as we build this This graphic here, the learning interplay, is how we, we see change happening, and it's really, what it says is, our Spark coaches influence and impact the site leads, who impact and work closely with their teams, who impact and work closely with the school staff and the community. And we see that learning interplay going back and forth. In its ideal form, we want our sites learning from our equity teams and our equity teams learning from our sites. That interplay has to happen to have true, authentic learning as we have an emerging So, you might be wondering, what does Spark Summer Professional Learning look like? It looks like this. All schools would receive training in foundations for restorative practices, in leading circles, and looking at bias, and looking at race, expectations, student achievement, and looking at systems of advantage and disadvantage, and earned and unearned privilege, and how to manage the emotions of leading equity work. We also have new SEL content I'll share in a second. We would be developing healthy school climate and make, and how to develop more positive places to learn and work together. And finally, really building coherence around the new administrative regulations and around the new discipline policy, as well as, of course, continued positive school climates brought about through PBIS. So, social-emotional learning. We have new SEL standards. We're focusing on less being more. There's also new kindness concepts tied to these core competencies. They've been thoughtfully developed. They're developed, really, with the whole child in mind, developed with the idea of self-discovery, inspiration, and purpose. It was very interesting, we saw Tim Schreiber talk at the CDI conference in Reno, and he kind of shook things up by talking about the purpose of our schools before the age of information and the internet. The purpose of our schools was really all about book smarts and, and, and learning from a, let me distribute information to you, where now, that information is all out there on the internet, and now it's all about, how do we inspire? How do we promote self-discovery? How do we build purpose? Okay? And our new SEL mantra is going to be tied to this notion of, we are, we belong, we can. And more specifically, you can see the mantra over on the left, we are, we belong, we can. You can see SEL competency goals, those are the core competencies, and then tied to indicators of success. And we are the only CDI district to have SEL goals under equity, which I think is exciting. It speaks to our focus on addressing opportunity gaps through educating the whole child and equity really being the starting point and ending point of every conversation. Another graphic, just to look at how we organize. You can see SEL indicators on the bottom, what each group gets, and how there's an equity theme going with each one. How will we know for successful? Our number of suspensions, our evidence of positive culture. I'd like to develop an efficacy index that really looks at, what do teachers bring? What value? How do they work together? How do we make sure they feel valuable in terms of learning and contributing and empowered as employees? We'd like to look at attendance rates, a continuum of practices, and academic measures. I do want to say that we need to manage expectations. Adult mindsets is the most difficult work, I think, as, as a principal, former principal at three different schools, that you can do. This work is most difficult, and it moves slowly. I also want to indicate, or really emphasize, that thinking restoratively takes lots of reflection, it takes lots of patience, it's a shift in thinking, and it takes a ton of time for site employees. As we focus on keeping students in school, there will be an increased need for multi-tiered systems of support, which I think is probably the next big conversation we're really going to have to have, and, and this will funnel right into that. And there is no best practice, only an emerging practice. Finally, the last slide, just the next steps for Spark. We want to continue to build a high-functioning equity team, and we're in the process of doing that right now. We will be gathering those surveys back to determine the level of support for each school. Over the summer, like I mentioned, we will have a series of equity retreats that go in-depth into this work. We will continue to develop our accountability measures and focusing on systemic change, remembering those places we need to really go slow to make sure we do this right. Okay? That is all I have. Any questions?
Any public comment?
We have three comments on this item, from Daryl White, Darlene Anderson, and Angie Sutherland.
Good evening, President Pritchett. Good evening, Superintendent Banda, and fellow board members. My name is Daryl White, I represent the Restorative Justice Collaborative, Collaborative, and you recognize that collaborative based on some information I've provided to you before. I'm going to start off with just being a little confused, and I'm confused simply because in 2014, in March, we came up with a whole child policy. And those participants with that policy, or moving that policy forward, collected a lot of data, spent a lot of time, spent a lot of energy, and we thought it was going to be that document that led much of what we were going to do in terms of its administrative regs. So, it was, I was a bit surprised when I see driving governance based on some other kinds of policies. So, I need some clarity there, and I'll get that from Doug at a later time. But, one of the things I'm most concerned with is, there's, the plan calls for a lot of stuff, and I'm not sure whether or not we can accomplish all that without having some form of target. I mean, if we're going to do all those things, then it seems to me we need to have a target for each one of them. Because if we have no target, it's like me throwing, throwing, throwing a dart at the board and doing it in this direction. It could end up anywhere. I'm real concerned if you're going to put that kind of resource, that kind of human power behind something that, in a sense, we don't know where we're going. And when you talk about race, race in itself is, takes more than just a few weeks in the summer. I mean, it takes a little bit of time. And, and my bigger concern is that it doesn't seem to take us in the direction we need to go. It seems to me, when you want to produce change at a school site that impacts the community, that reduces disproportionality, you develop relationships between teachers and students. It seems that that's where our focus should be. And I don't see the kind of community planning that's parallel to, to what we're doing with staff in this plan at all. I've only had a couple of hours to read it, so I'm really looking forward to seeing the whole plan. And when I've been able to really dive into this, this situation, I, I'd really, really like to come, come back and let you know what I really think. SEL, PBIS, restorative justice, those are heavy lifts, folks. Tremendously heavy hits, heavy lifts. And I just don't see that we can get as far as we need to get in the short amount of time that we have without the targets that I talked about earlier. I think we need to take another look. The other component we need to add to this, though, is an audit. I mean, we have all of these interchanging things going on at the same time. How are we going to know that schools are doing exactly what we're, we want them to do if we don't have some... we don't have some system that's internal where we can go out and see? What is the relationship between parents and the school? What is the relationship between students and their teachers? How do we measure that? I don't see what we need in this plan to measure those real, real important issues that really make the tremendous difference. Thank you.
You knew you were next.
Okay, so what can we say about this Spark? It's not going to spark anything. That's what I can say. What I can say is that I've had several parents contact me recently about law enforcement coming to deliver a notice to them that they're suspended from their child's school site. And it's actually delivered by law enforcement, more than one. And these parents are told not to come back. And then when their suspension time is over, sometimes it gets confusing in the office and the law enforcement is still called. I don't believe, I believe that this is 2016, not 1969. In 1969, it was a struggle for African-American people to be in public school with public services. How do we get past the isms and who should be entitled to what? And how can we have expectations? All my conversations in every one of my IEPs were difficult. They were difficult because my child's a bright child, but he is also autistic. And so, and the services that I expected were the services for a child without a disability. And amazingly enough, he made progress, but we had those difficult conversations. I mean, actually, I had a RSP teacher who decided not to come back after Christmas because she didn't like the way I talked to her. But it was just a conversation about how I could better support my child in the program. When I'm looking at positive behavior support and social and emotional learning and, you know, response to intervention and PBIS and all these words, I ask you, how does it work on the campus right now? Where's the data that demonstrates what's happening? I think you guys have the data. It's ugly data. It's so ugly that it's painful. But how do we change those things? We don't change them without real conversations. We don't change them without engaging the community. It is so important to talk to the people that are disenfranchised. And those are the ones who don't come out. And those are the ones who try to stay away. And it's just not African-Americans. It's children of color in this district. And we have some great sites where children compete to get in those sites, and there are actually children of color in Leonardo da Vinci and Didier and, you know, that's a place where you say, okay, this looks like America. But there are some sites where it doesn't look like America, where it looks like, you know, law enforcement is sitting right there in the parking lot. And when you arrest, you know, a kindergarten or a third grader, then you have to ask yourself, well, what's really going on here? Because this is not, this is not a public service where children are thriving. And that's what I want to know. I want to know, when are we going to look at the data and then have real serious conversations about what thriving looks like in a public educational agency?
Hello again. I'm Angie Sutherland and a parent at Hollywood Park Elementary. And I'm looking forward to getting a copy of this handout. I had a hard time following along and really grasping everything that this new program entails. I'm a little confused because I haven't heard anything about this until now, although I've been waiting for something to happen in terms of equity. I just don't know what sparked this particular framework. I did see a climate survey that I stumbled upon on the district website for K through, or 4th through 6th grade students, and then another one for, I can't remember the grades, but higher, higher grades. And my daughter did fill that out, so I don't know if that played into this. I would like to have a conversation. I don't know if this framework speaks to the diverse equity issues that we have around race, gender, disability, socioeconomic status. And I don't necessarily agree that PBIS, SEL, and restorative practices are the only solutions. There may be more to it that I'm missing. I just don't know how this framework came up and is it being adopted tonight? It feels like there needs to be some more input into this. So thank you.
This is an information item.
But thank you for the work, Mr. Husher. Thank you.
Vice President Ryan.
Thank you. So I hope you'll bear with me a little bit, Doug. I have several questions and comments that I want to cover tonight. You know, I want to begin by acknowledging your tremendous leadership at Oak Ridge Elementary and the good work you did, much of which I understand is the basis for this Spark initiative. I have been a huge champion of social-emotional learning, PBIS, restorative practices. I absolutely see the value of all of these three approaches. And yet, I think the three approaches alone, without an honest conversation around race, are not meaningful. So I want to start by just going through some of the data that keeps me up at night and, you know, frankly, is unconscionable on so many different levels. You know, starting with a conversation that you and I had recently around disproportionality of school suspensions and a troubling upward trend that we're seeing for our African-American students in Sacramento City Unified School District. So from 2013 to 2015, we saw that despite only representing about 17.3% of total enrollment, there was more than 40% of our African-American students who were actually suspended. Absolutely find that to be unacceptable. We also have, unfortunately, high suspension rates for Hispanic-Latino students. When we look at the number of students who are having access to Gate coursework, once again, we're seeing that our white students are actually overrepresented in our Gate courses, and our Gate revision policy seeks to address some of that. Unfortunately, our African-American students are woefully underrepresented. And I say woefully underrepresented because despite the number of total enrollment, they are only about 5.3% of all Gate-identified students. Then when we talk about students who are actually meeting the college readiness benchmarks, once again, we have a tale of, you know, two cities to be, you know, to touch upon this idea that students who live in certain ZIP codes have an opportunity to access the college dream and college readiness, and those who live in others are being left behind. So we know that college readiness for African-Americans is absolutely inadequate, 36%. For our Latino-Hispanic students, once again, totally inadequate compared to the representation of Hispanic students in the district with about 22%. And our white students, once again, are two times more likely to be college-ready, about 65% of the population, which is to me beyond troubling. And then just to get to what Angie was talking about and Darla Anderson around special education, you know, because we recognize that special education students represent a whole host of challenges and opportunities to serve. But we also know that if you are an African-American student, you're far more likely to be represented in our special education population. And we also know that our Hispanic students represent a large number of our special education population as well. So, you know, once again, white students are underrepresented with our special education population, taking up about 15% of the special education population. So when we look at all of this and we talk about an equity office, you know, I really began to say, in other districts where they're doing this work well, what are the core tenants of the work? And what I've found, and it's been documented, and I actually have some direct pieces from research, you know, is that in strong equity offices in school districts across the country and in strong districts in which closing the achievement gap, the opportunity gap, is at the center of everything they do, you've got, one, a clear definition of what equity is and agreed upon, explicit in nature. And I think one of the concerns that came to me as I read through the Spark proposal, and this is something that I've spoken with you about in the past as well, is this idea that equality and equity are two very different things. One of my favorite illustrations is this idea that equality is just treating everyone the same, and you see three people of different heights who are all on boxes trying to look over a fence. And obviously, the tall person has an advantage with the box versus the box the same height for the short person, keeping them behind. But this idea that equity is giving, and you said this earlier, meeting students where they're at, giving every one of our students what they need to be successful. And I don't think that can happen unless we're using data and an honest conversation around race. One of the things that has come up consistently in talking to community groups and certainly in my work over the course of the last year with the Restorative Justice Collaborative, of which I know a board member, Wu, was involved in in the past, is this sense that there have been initiatives in the past that tried to address race in a very honest way. We talked about the fact that Glenn Singleton came and in some circles was seen as lightning rod. And yet, when I had an opportunity to ask some teachers, there was a sense that it was actually a really hard conversation that moved them, that changed their thinking. So I say that because one of the other core tenants of meaningful equity work at a school district level is this idea that race matters. And I saw in this entire document, the word "race" only listed once. We talked about disproportionality, but race did not seem to be a strong strand in everything. I don't know if you wanted to say something, but I was going to continue just a few more things. So, you know, what Darlene Anderson said about database discussions absolutely matter, this idea of how are we using the data and what that means to our different races and ethnicities to determine how we invest our resources and to also frankly focus on a few key items that help dramatically shift that conversation. Without that, I don't see how you measure and then determine the efficacy of an initiative so wide in scope. And so that's something that is of grave concern for me. So I guess finally, my question to you is, you know, based upon what you've just outlined, some of the concerns that have been expressed by myself in the past, by our community members, how do we measure what you're proposing, both in terms of quantitative analysis and qualitative analysis? And what is the resistance to tackling race in a very real front and center way? Because at the end of the day, while it is uncomfortable, it is the reality of this beautiful, diverse district in which we serve. And frankly, one of the most poignant statements that was made on a recent trip to Oak Ridge Elementary School were teachers saying that they were forced into uncomfortable conversations. And often, it was about assessing the student experience and how they were viewing students based on what they looked like, their ethnicity, their race, their life experiences that they were bringing to them. If we can't talk about that, how can we on a site level ever empower our educators to develop relationships with students that will buck that dynamic?
Great, great points, all of them. I think, as you know, from my leadership at Oak Ridge and other schools, race is the single biggest part of this work. The course we set at Oak Ridge while I was there made sure it was core to the foundation of everything. And I am very apologetic that that is the tone from the short 10-minute presentation that race did not play or it was seen in a bigger light, because to me, it is absolutely core and central to everything that we do. The summer trainings around equity would absolutely be built around race. Everything is about expectations. Everything is about bias. Everything is about what has been done in the past and what has been done to change the wrongs of the past. And how do we deal with our nation's history in a way that is serious and resets the trajectory for our kids that we have right now? This work is very, very important to me. The race conversation is needed in every avenue. The part that is probably, it's impossible in a 10-minute presentation to adequately portray, but is the investment in the coaches that would support the sites around race. Every month would have, and maybe the slide wasn't very clear, but every month had a theme around race of questions that would be asked that would guide all other work around disproportionality, around changing the discourse at the campus, around looking at systems of inequity, about looking beyond just rules and expectations of the school, but looking about how are there inequities and how we work with our communities and who we give power and voice to about what we choose to value at our schools. And so, everything about Spark actually does gravitate toward race being the foundation and the cornerstone for significant work. The other point I would say is, we're in the process of developing some key measures for how we look at data around race and student achievement. As those become more solid, there's where our conversation lies. And I'm really glad that you, Doug, and you found that disproportionality. The numbers are absolutely appalling for the number of students that qualify for Gate and their representation of this district and the number of African-Americans who do. In the same way that it's absolutely appalling, the disproportionality that exists with our African-American students in this district. We still have a four-to-one suspension rate even though we have more white kids than African-American students in this district. And so, I'm extremely passionate about this. The reason why I've chosen to do this work is because I want to take what was done at Oak Ridge and take it out to a much bigger context across the district, and I think we can do that.
Can I ask you just two follow-up questions in that? When you talk about having these modules in which consultants would come and focus on different elements of the race conversation, I think we have a wealth of expertise in our backyard, you know, Oakland Unified School District and others that we can draw upon, that are credible messengers, many whom have relationships with some of the key groups we work with within this district. And so I hope that some of those individuals would be sought out. And then beyond that, you know, I'm really interested in how do we translate this plan from leadership vision, common definition of equity, to what this means for teachers in the classrooms, giving them all the supports they need, including the classroom managements, what this means in communities in terms of supporting that climate that is not just occurring in this classroom, but at so many other elements that we often have our community groups speaking to. And then once again, how we adjust and learn from that in a very transparent, real way, because there is going to be, you know, some challenge in growing and developing this program. And frankly, I think we are missing an opportunity if we don't take advantage of these content experts that we have, both in the community and in the district, who are absolutely committed to seeing this through.
Member Cochran.
Thank you, Mr. Husher, for your work. It was very difficult work, and you've put a lot of good effort and organizational skills into it. I'd like to thank Principal White for his comments because I agree that the cornerstone of this is the relationship between the teachers and the students. These programs are not going to go anywhere unless that is a firm, loving, strong bond that works well. And I have some serious concerns, and I want to share them. You probably know, I am a public school teacher, and the school where I taught for the last 15 years is basically the sister school to Willsey Wood with the exact same demographics. And we had PBIS in our school. And I can tell you that it was not successful. And in general, it was not successful in the Elk Grove District. And I know of some of my colleagues in Elk Grove are probably arching their eyebrows if they're watching this right now, but I was a teacher in the school and I had my, you know, feet on the ground and I saw what was happening. And it involves total buy-in from every member of the staff to be successful. And public school teachers are extremely overloaded with directives and ideas and motivational concepts that they are trying to employ in their classroom, as well as teach subject matter and form that good, solid relationship with students. And PBS was gimmicky and a fad, and I'll bet you $10 in five years, we won't be saying PBIS, we'll be saying something else. Kind of a sad truth of education, but that is what I do think about it. Our school has and had, when I was actively teaching there, a wonderful principal, a strong leader. He was an African-American. He embraced PBIS, and we gave it a good try, but it just was not successful. On the flip side of that coin, what was successful, and then I saw firsthand, was restorative justice and social-emotional learning. It's because those programs actually involve com- It's because those programs actually involve conversations that are meaningful with the students, the teachers, and the individuals that are in the situation, or have to work out problems, or need direction, or want to express their own opinions and ideas. And that's the core of communication, and it's communication that will change and affect change in the school levels. So, I'm asking you about PBIS. I'm thumbs down on it. It's going to be a waste of money. If it's stuck in this program, it's stuck in here because it's popular, and it's not going to be something that we stick with and that will be effective with our students. So, I push it back to you. I want to know the data and the facts that say it really works. Show it to us. How much is it going to cost? And why are we doing this when we know the social-emotional learning and restorative justice are so effective? Why don't we throw our hat and our efforts towards that?
Very good question, Ellen. So, the first thing I'd like to say is, the board policy around discipline from June of 2014 calls for mandatory training district-wide in PBIS, SEL, restorative practices, culturally responsive teaching and learning. So, the board policy did call for it. Personally, I agree with you. Relationship is core to this work and where it is absolutely at. You might have seen on those slides, PBIS was often the last feature listed. I believe the main vehicle here is restorative practices and relationships with kids. I also believe that SEL, those core competencies, is absolutely huge. The part of PBIS and why we're looking at an integrated approach, there are some pieces that are very sound around PBIS, and the research sound around it too, in terms of just developing some common expectations as a team of people around a school, so there's not a million different rules at a school. We do not plan, just so you know. We have a group of nine schools currently going through PBS Year One this year. Next year, we plan in an integrated way to make that PBS Restorative Practice SEL, to take some key features of PBS that we think will really help advance us still, but not spend the money, like you say, or the depth of time away from classrooms in PBS per se. There are some core pieces we think are key, but really, the main vehicle being SEL and restorative practices.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I think that that's a sound approach, baby in the bathwater. So, courageous conversations with staff around race are very, very important, and I've actually been in conversations like that. A staff at a school sitting in a ring and having conversations that are very difficult about perceptions, personal histories, going forward. When we look towards doing that type of training, because that self-examination is key for all individuals of all races, like, remember Ryan has said, we have to look towards partners and people we know where they have done it successfully, where we have masters at doing this, because it's going to flop unless you have someone who can carry this off. Because you'll, you know, nothing will turn a teacher's mind off more quickly than to think that it's a fad, here we go. No, you're not in my classroom, dot, dot, dot. It's got to be done well, because if it's not done well, it's not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that at all?
Agreed with that part, and I just want to make sure that you're aware that Oakland Unified has been studied at Grant Lake, as well as San Francisco Unified and LA Unified in the creation of Spark. So trying to see their learnings in their five- and seven-year trajectories as well. Thank you.
Member Rodriguez?
President Pritchett. Mr. Hesher, I think tonight is a courageous conversation in and of itself.
Thank you.
And I applaud you for being here and being in the front of all of this conversation, because I know it kind of will seem like it's coming at you, but we can't grow from it unless we talk about it. So I'll be as gentle as I can while having a courageous conversation with you. So first, my question is about community engagement. Did you take this plan out to the community district-wide and ask for input into this?
So, different sources have contributed information as we've built this out. We've talked with Sacramento Act, we've talked with Black Parallel School Board, we've talked with the CTA, with numerous conversations with principals, with different teachers, trying to really understand what the needs are within schools, and also trying to engage some families in some conversations as well about where are our biggest challenges and how do we really help discover the talents, interests, and goals of your children, and how to really take those as far as we can.
And when you said, I find it interesting, is that when you stated that you talked to the Black Parallel School Board, I had a member shake her head now.
It's a conversation that continues. I think we share many of the same goals, perhaps some different strategies at times, but I have great respect for them and their work, and want to continue to work very closely with them.
Well, I mean, I thank you for outreach to those organizations, and sometimes, they can be a shortcut in some aspects to the community as a whole. But I know that you were a principal before, and, you know, you wouldn't substitute hearing from your parents at the school site because you reached out to, let's just say, area congregations together and taken their word for it. You know, you would have gone straight to your parents and asked your parents, hey, what is it that you need and want in order to improve the situation? Correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I'd like to see that genuine type of engagement when you talk about this. You know, also, when you go out to our community partners, engaging them in the conversation of, hey, this is something that I'm planning to take to the board, here's something, I'm going to give you a preview of whatever you can. I know that there are some things that are still in the works, but at least apprise them that this is going to be presented, because there's nothing like having support and buy-in. And you know that the models that are presented here are going to be supported by buy-in. Otherwise, you know, the best-laid plans go to the wayside because the implementation fails. You know that, right? It's just because you're here at this level, I think, that you kind of get lost away from the people at the bottom. And I think you need to understand that this is, this plan that you're presenting is for those people who are directly being affected by all of these issues. On Slide 15, you have one bullet at the very bottom, it says academic measures as an indicator of success. And I'm concerned in that if we don't have a clear indication of what type of measures we're going to be focusing on in terms of academics, you know, we can, it could be a moving target. And, you know, I'm looking at this data, and I see one of the things that I've noticed, AP placement exams. And I said this at the last meeting when we talked about GATE, the GATE policy and higher education programs. We have an over-identification in some races. Asian, for example, has a lot more, significantly more students of the three racial groups that I always focus on, which is Southeast Asian, you know, African-American and Latino. And I see that there's more Asians that get identified to take AP exams. But when you look at, you pivot those two numbers, 358 Hispanics were identified to take an AP exam, and 203 of them scored three-plus. And you look at Asians, 532 were identified to take an AP exam, and 292 scored three-plus. That tells me that, you know, all things being equal, actually Hispanics, they had better results with the fewer number of people. So that tells me that we're under-identifying Hispanics. When you go over to African-American, it's almost shameful. We only had 89 African-Americans that were identified to take an AP exam, and of those, 39 scored a three or better, right, a three-plus. That's 43.8% of the population that took that exam. Again, all things being equal, you put everything on an equal playing field, Latinos, African-Americans, and Asians, and whites, they're all just as smart as each other. But we're not identifying each racial group properly. That's what it shows me, that all of our children in this district all have the capability to achieve at these high levels, yet there's only a focus on two groups. And every graphic I can tell you, that has come before this board in the last eight years I've been here, it's always been whites and Asians. And then we've pushed to disaggregate that data for Asians, because we know not all Asians are up here at the top level. And yet, despite the fact that we've been talking about it for eight years, we haven't had much movement of that needle. And this just proves to me that all ethnic groups are equally as smart as the other. And so why do we treat them differently? And it comes to race and attitudes toward race. Who do you hire in your staff to talk about this program? What does your staff look like? Don't answer that question. What does your staff look like? Does your staff look like the population that we serve, or do they look different? Do our teachers and our population of teachers, do they look like the population of students we serve, or do they look different? We all know the fact, 60% of our teaching force is white. We need to do a better job. There's such a thing as called "brain-based learning." If a child cannot create a connection or a trust with the person that's standing in front of them because they look different from them, then it's going to be harder to learn from them. And if that person, even far, far worse, if that person has an attitude toward that child of a different color, or the student picks up on that, they're not going to learn. So yes, it was important for us to see the race part here included in this. And yes, it's important to me to see the community aspect in here, because we need to get that buy-in. We need to hear these stories from our community. Without it, I don't think we're going to be successful. We'll be like another one of these programs where we say, well, it's another program here today gone tomorrow. And I would hate to have an investment of staff time and district dollars into this. Now, Slide 16, managing expectations. I don't think the whole thing of meeting students where they are is enough. I think you need to meet students where they are, find out what their wants and needs are, find out what kind of resources they need, and even if that calls upon us as a district, or as a teacher, or as a principal in the district, to give them more resources than the other students are receiving. So that way, they all could be at the equal level. All votes rise at the same level. And that's how you truly get all of those votes up. Again, it's having these courageous conversations. And lastly, I believe it starts with leadership. It starts with people on this board, it starts how we model our behaviors, it starts how we talk about things. Then it goes to you as staff. You are the district leader, you're the role model on our behalf, and teachers. Teachers work as a role model on our behalf. So it goes all the way down and goes all the way back up, from the teacher level to the student level, all the way back up to us. It's a constant flow back and forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. Member Wu?
Thank you, Doug. This is a great conversation. I thank my colleagues for the conversation that we're having already. We wouldn't have this conversation but for the work that we've engaged here and we've asked for by this board. So I'm thankful that this conversation has started. I'm thankful for Ms. Darlene Anderson's mention of "isms," because those are very important. I'm thankful for my colleague, Member Ryan, talking about racism and disproportionality. That's also very important. But those are the visible items that divide us as a people. And inherent in what divides us is also the differences, not only in race, but also in religion, in social strata, in class, in ethnicity, in national origin. And I think as part of our approach, that we should at least, we should include those differences in that which we are bringing to our children and to our educators, because that makes up the entire fabric of our communities. Racism is easy to spot because it's visible. Less easy is the differences in national origin, or ethnicity, or religion. But they too, in history, have played an important part in that which divides us. And conflicts have been created throughout history because of those differences. So I want to make sure that they're not forgotten in this big discussion. As I said, racism and disproportionality are very, very important because it's visible, but there are also a lot of differences that lay under, less visible, and they will, if given the opportunity, also raise their ugly heads. So I want to make sure that that's included. Now, I have one other question, and you haven't mentioned this, but I guess the question that I have for you is, do you have the resources you need to make this happen?
Thank you for your question, Darrell. So, we're working on it, you know, and I take to heart each of board members' comments tonight. I still supervise seven priority schools, I still oversee four alternative ed programs, and I'm trying to lead the equity work with a very small department. We are going to be adding three training specialists in the next couple of weeks. We will be really looking carefully at what they need to bring, and many of you have suggested tonight qualities that are necessary as we go through that selection process. Darrell, this is huge work, and right now, no, we don't have the resources we need to really have the impact. We've heard each of the board members comment on the disproportionality, whether that's GATE, whether that's discipline, whether that's expectations. How do we engage the community in this? How do we make sure that partners are all valued in this? This is difficult, difficult, soul-searching work. And so, we need to build in a thoughtful way. We're getting them more, we're getting more, which is good, but not yet.
I'm hoping that I'm still here to see this to full fruition, so.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that we have a public comment that came in later, so.
We have one more comment from Nikki Malevsky.
Thank you. I need to report that there's been very little discussion with CTA about this initiative. And the one meeting that we did have, we shared very, very similar concerns to those expressed by Member Cochran. If the district does another top-down shove into our classrooms initiative that does not have the buy-in of staff, I can see these things going very, very south, and not being productive. And all the money that's spent for six training specialists, all told, and salaries for administrators in this program, all that training will be to waste if we do not build a comprehensive program. all that training will be to waste if we do not build a comprehensive program that comes from the school sites, from the communities, that fits their needs, that teachers have buy-in to that program. Restorative justice has the potential to be significant impact on our communities and our school sites. But if it's done wrong, it will not do well. Please, please, take the time to work with this, with the teachers, have input, and work this out before it's implemented. Thank you.
Vice President Hanson.
Just very quickly, I'd like to thank Nikki for those comments and Ellen as well. I think that it's critical for us to have the teachers obviously be involved in this. And there certainly were a lot of questions and comments by my fellow board members. So I know you were taking diligent notes. And I know this is just an information item. But I too am very concerned about just getting caught up in fads of the moment. So we do have pieces of this that are proven to be successful. And I hope that we focus on those and not create something new that will be gone when all of us are not here in a few more years, at least a couple of us, you know, board members who are coming and going. And not ask teachers to implement something that there's not going to be a long-term commitment to because that's obviously the most critical piece of this whole puzzle. So I really take that to heart.
Jay, could I share? We do have three restorative justice demonstration sites this year. Burbank, Oak Ridge, and Willsey Wood. We have offered Saturday trainings. We've offered summer trainings. We have nine trained restorative justice trainers that are teachers in our district right now by the International Institute of Restorative Practices. We have worked very closely with them and their staffs. And we are open to communication with SCTA. We have emails right now out to them wishing to engage with them in this process. We understand that this can't be top-down, that this can't be you-will. This can't be a check-off list. One of the biggest tenets of restorative practices is doing things with people, not to people. We believe in that in the implementation as well.
Okay. First off, I wanted to thank you for your work that you put into it. And I know that, I don't want you to get frustrated of, you know, of the comments that you've got. You've done, you know, you're starting to put together a piece that can potentially work. There seems to be some gaps in it. But I think that's probably why you came and put it to the board, so you could get our feedback and then start working with our partners, our community partners. So I look forward to hearing this back. And if you, you know, feel free to reach out to the board members as well if you need some additional feedback. All right. Thank you so much. I'm going to go back real quick. We, I misspoke on the consent agenda. And I had pulled the entire 10.8 from the consent agenda. And what needed to be pulled was just a portion of the consent. So what I'd like to pull is Premier Management Group from the consent agenda. So I believe I need an amendment to that vote.
Proceeding, you should make a motion for reconsideration. That's approved. Then you move the consent item 10.1A, deleting the Premier Management Group, Inc. So two votes.
Two votes. Okay, so can I get a motion for reconsideration?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. So back to 10.1A. And the part that I would like to pull is Premier Management Group, Inc. Can I get?
And otherwise, move the item 10.1A.
That's correct. Only. All the rest of them will pass through, yes.
So moved.
No, it's just.
So.
Also pulled 10.1O, so.
Yeah, but you already passed that. This is just 10.1A. So the motion would be, and you could say so moved, the motion would be to approve 10.1A with the exception of Premier Management Group, Inc.
Thank you for that clarification.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Sorry, we had to go back to that. Before you go into the next segment? Okay. Member Hanson, or Vice President Hanson?
Thanks. I just wanted to take a moment, just kind of, since we've been talking about school climate, I thought this would be a good point just to make a quick comment. I wanted to take an opportunity to talk about some misinformation that is being distributed by SCTA. And thought it was important to share publicly, recognizing the folks that are here in attendance and the several hundred who watch online and on TV. First, like all my board members, I'm happy to meet with any of our staff members. I deeply value the work of the teachers on behalf of our district and our students. And that's one of the reasons I felt that it was very important to say this publicly. Flyers distributed by SCTA claim a lot of things that unfortunately just are not correct. So I think it's important to, for me, to address this publicly. First, they state that revenues have increased by eighty-four million dollars per year. That's just not correct. That dollar amount includes one-time funds and restricted funds, which can't be put into that full amount. Additionally, our district is allocating an additional seven million dollars towards Calsters and Calpers wisely, so that we can pay for the pensions that we've promised our teachers and our staff, the remaining staff. Additionally, as folks well know, we will be paying an additional thirty-one point two million annually, annually, out of the new LCFF revenues to cover these additional costs over the next few years. So what the reality is, is we have a net revenue increase that's closer to ten million dollars over the three-year period. Secondly, the flyers that distributed claim our superintendent is the highest paid in the area. That is just not correct. Please understand that his salary is a lump sum, meaning that his salary is all-inclusive and includes health benefits, retirement, reimbursements, expenses, all that stuff. And as we all know, total compensation is the total compensation of everything that's involved. So actually, the highest-paid superintendent in the area is Elk Grove, which is the largest district. And his salary is in line with San Juan. So that information was just not correct. Thirdly, the flyer claimed that our district hired fifty-four new administrators in the past year. That's just not correct. The folks who put out the flyer well know that twenty-seven of those positions were existing staff that were not represented and in fact have been moved into a bargaining unit. So they were not new hires. They were existing positions that were reclassified. Additionally, the district hired five new assistant principals. So the net increase for admin staff was actually eight FTEs. During that same time, the district also added forty-eight custodians, twelve counselors, five nurses. And we're also going to be lowering our class sizes in K-3 down to twenty-four to one. I'm very excited about that. And so are the folks in our district. Flyers also claim that we have a hundred and fifty unfilled vacancies for teachers. That's just not correct. Currently, there are twenty-seven openings for teaching positions. Recently, we have hired seventy-three new teachers for the fall. Very excited about that. We've done a great job. We anticipate that we'll need to fill an additional seventy to eighty vacancies. And I hope that we'll all be working together at that. And I've personally recruited more than one teacher myself who'll be joining the district that's a new teacher that I'm very excited about. The flyer also claimed that the district is using substitutes rather than hiring full-time credentialed staff and that we have spent three point six million less than budgeted. The reality is that during the budget process, the district held two million dollars to pay for additional collaborative time among teachers. And because the district and SCTA were unable to agree to a school calendar that was going to allow designated time for teachers, those funds have not been spent. Also, the flyer claims that the average teacher in our district is paid fifteen to thirty-two percent lower than surrounding school districts. That's just not correct. Regrettably, there is a salary difference, but it's actually between nine and eleven percent. But that's only if you consider salary. When we consider total compensation, which is the actual reality of how you measure compensation in the rest of the world, our benefits on average for SCTA are twenty thousand dollars per year. So we actually have the highest benefits package in the area and a very comparable package for our staff. Flyers also claim that the district is proposing to eliminate retiree benefits for new teachers. That also is just not correct. While that proposal was on the table, and I told, when I told, you'll have a chance to participate, and this is a, you can talk when I'm finished, if you'll please give me that courtesy. And when I met with some folks from SCTA, I told them that I didn't think that that was the right thing to do. And I regret that was ever put out there. But because that has been rejected, that is no longer on the table. So what is now on the table is just simply a two-and-a-half percent increase. That is the only thing that is on the table. So I regret that some of the SCTA leadership knows what the reality of these issues are but is knowingly passing along these incorrect statements. It is a disservice to your fellow teachers, to our students, and to our community. I meet with teachers every week. I am very proud of their work. I look forward to an honest discussion as we negotiate through this current situation. And I appreciate the indulgence of my board and the community while I made my statements.
Vice President Hanson, just for the record, did we tie this to 11.1? Is that what you were? You tied it to 11? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had that for the record. We have a public comment?
We have a public comment from David Fisher.
Where to start? How about your own document I'm looking at right now? In your board packet, A-15. Total revenues. Total revenues, fourteen fifty, four hundred and thirty-two million, six hundred and fifty thousand. Total revenues, fifteen sixteen, five hundred and twenty-nine million, five hundred and forty-one. So if we were wrong, we underestimated how much extra money. It wasn't eighty-four, it's more like nineties. It went up between this time and the last time. Okay? What else? Eight twenty-two on your board packet, right here. District, two hundred and forty-four FTE management positions. We have asked over and over and over for a list of them. We've gotten two lists, both of them incomplete. One did have one hundred and seventy-five that didn't include even a single site administrator. So there's over two forty-four. What else? Last board meeting, the three point six million dollars that you're under, one of the board members asked Gerardo, why? He said, because we are paying temporary and substitute teachers. I can go on and on. So we stand one hundred percent behind what we put out. We will stand, we will sit down with anybody at any time. Before the board meeting last time, we also pointed out to the superintendent and to Consey that on your public, your rumor mill, there were several misstatements, including one that said that retirees cost eighteen million per year and twenty thousand per person. Four hours later, the superintendent sent out another letter that linked to that same misinformation. Now, finally, it's been changed weeks later. But we stand by it. And if it's wrong, why do you put it right here?
The proposal that the district has on the table still includes a concession in retirement.
You need to put in a card if.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, just for.
Anybody else want to see in the last few seconds? Anyway.
Thank you.
John Borosus with SCTA.
Thank you.
The district still has on the table a proposal to take, to cut health insurance for new hires. The district has not withdrawn its proposal. In fact, we insisted that the district withdraw its proposal because it's an unlawful proposal. And the district refused to do that, including when Board Member Hanson was at the mediation session. We asked that the district remove that proposal, and the district refused to do that. It's still on the table. It has never been removed from the table. We appreciate the fact now that at least one board member is saying that they're prepared to withdraw that proposal, but it's still on the table. So if you have an interest in withdrawing it, we'd appreciate hearing that officially across the bargaining table. Thank you.
Thank you.
So another thing, he's ceding his time to me.
Dave, you would have to put another.
Not only are the reserves, the reserves went up to fifty-one million according to your own documents. So if you want to, your documents, if they're wrong, then please put them correctly in here. That'd be great. And you can quote from your own documents.
Thank you. Okay, we need to move on to this next subject, so.
For the next item, we should have.
We do not have a quorum up on our board. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Oh, okay, never mind. We did not gavel, so we are good. All right. Item 11.2, Approved Resolution 2879, authorizing the issuance and of the negotiated sale of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Funds, Measure Q, election of 2012. Twenty sixteen, Series D, in the amount not to exceed fourteen million. And related to documents and actions.
Good evening, President Pritchett, Superintendent Banda, and members of the board. Tonight, I want to ask Jeff Small from Capital Finance Group, as well as Erica Gonzalez from Stifel, the underwriters, to present, this is our first reading for the issue for the Measure Q for forty million dollars.
Thank you very much, President Pritchett, members of the board, Superintendent Banda, Jeff Small, Capital Public Finance Group, Erica Gonzalez, the managing director at Stifel, and a top-notch banker that we have with us. And Erica will answer any questions regarding the sale process. I noticed that there's a new board member who I haven't presented for before. But real briefly, Capital Public Finance Group serves as the district's municipal advisor. We're registered with the United States Securities and Exchange Commission as a municipal advisor to act as a fiduciary on behalf of the district in terms of debt issuance. I know that the district is very familiar with the Measure Q and Measure R. Very short background, back in June of 2012, the district approved a sustainable facilities master plan. It identified two billion dollars in needs. And thankfully, in 2012, the district passed both Measure Q and R for three hundred and forty-six and sixty-eight million dollars respectively. The district has sold two different bonds in 2013, seventy million; 2015, ninety million, for a total of a hundred and sixty million dollars with the bonds. There is an estimated issuance schedule, which you see before you. And what that does, it identifies bonds that have been issued from Measure Q and R and bonds that will currently be issued and what's planned for future issuances. And you will see there that, under Measure Q, there's a Series D in the amount of fourteen million dollars, which we're recommending that the board approve on May 5th. That fourteen million dollars is seven million dollars that would have been issued as a Measure Q bond to acquire land for the central kitchen. And we know that the district is very busy identifying that land. We plan on issuing that seven million in 2017. But in order to maintain the tax rates at fifty-four dollars and maximize proceeds that are available to the district, we're recommending the issuance of fourteen million dollars with the bonds, seven that the district would have issued, and an additional seven that the district can issue because of increases in assessed value, which is very good. You have a very healthy tax base. You will notice that. two thousand nineteen. And within those amounts, there's thirty-three-point-nine million dollars that could be issued as, as a Measure R for that central kitchen project, just depending on the, the pace of, of progress on, on that. If there's any questions at any time, please feel free to jump in. Happy to address it as I go. Over the past twenty-five years, the district has had assessed value growth of three-point-six percent. There was a, a drop-off during the recession, and most recently, assessed value has grown by four-point-seven percent through two thousand fifteen, sixteen. So the economy is definitely turning around, turning around and very healthy. We're taking advantage of that increase in assessed value by issuing now. And what you see on slide number five is, is basically maximizing the tax rates in sixteen and seventeen, and at the same time, allowing room in future tax rates to issue the, the remaining bonds. On slide number six, what you see is the, the fourteen million dollars issuance. It's a fully amortized issuance. It has a twenty-five-year life, and it will be layered on the existing debt service. And you see a breakdown of the, the interest and principal on, on fourteen million dollars. Combined, the district has issued a hundred and sixty million dollars. As I've said before, the idea is to maximize the total amount of bonds and also minimize the interest costs that accrue on that amount. I want to congratulate the district. You've been able to pay off twenty-nine percent of that hundred and sixty million dollars in a four-year period. So by paying off those bonds early, you're saving money on interest costs, and ultimately, that serves the taxpayers very well. Very important, anytime we present to you, we like to present the flow of funds and identify all costs involved in financings. And on slide eight, you can see the sources and uses of funds from this fourteen million dollar transaction, which will include what we call original issue premium, which is really a, a market-driven way of acquiring proceeds. Those proceeds cannot be spent on projects, but what they do is go into a debt service fund, and they're used to pay interest. Along that, you see project fund deposit of approximately thirteen-point-seven million, cost of issuance, which I'll detail in a minute, of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, an underwriting discount, fifty-six thousand dollars, and bond insurance. These are estimates, but we like to provide you with a fairly accurate, yet conservative estimate. And after the sale, we will come back and update you on how we did in terms of what those estimates actually look like. Slide number nine, you're very familiar with. It's the estimated cost of issuance. It outlines costs by all your attorneys, our fees, rating fees, and the like, and that totals approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. When we return on May fifth, we'll return with a number of documents, a paying agent agreement, which describes the bonds, a bond purchase agreement, which identifies the terms under which Stifel will purchase those bonds, a continuing disclosure document, which will prescribe the terms and conditions for providing ongoing information about the bonds, and most importantly, a preliminary official statement, which tells investors about the bonds and about the district. Next steps, again, we, we would like to return to you on May fifth for approval. We plan on pricing the bonds in mid-May and closing in early June. And with that, Erica and I are, are happy to answer any and all questions that you might have.
We have public comment.
We have one comment on this item from Darlene Anderson.
Hi. I just wanted to come back and touch bases with you all, simply because, you know, when you're issuing bonds, you're also talking about what the district's purpose is. And when we look at our community, and we look at the graduation rate, or who's not graduating? We look at the number of kids who are killing each other in the streets. And, I mean, you know, this is two thousand sixteen. The reality is that a lot of kids don't graduate, and if they do, they graduate with certificates of completion, which allows them to graduate, but not really, they're not really employable. So when you look at the interests on, you know, and what is our agenda? What is our purpose? I mean, if the school district has a purpose to educate students, the benefit from the, you know, the education should be real, should be a real-life experience. It's not, it's not that for so many kids. And a lot of kids who graduate stay right here locally in Sacramento, and the burden is on the city when, when they can't take care of themselves. That's higher cost for incarceration, higher cost for mental health services, higher cost for everything. And when, all we have to do is value these children to ensure that they are making a difference, and that we can make a difference with them living in the same city. I just don't see continuing to go out and ask for additional money and say support. Well, what are you supporting? Are we supporting the prison pipeline? Is that what we're supporting? I mean, because we have to have an interest. When I was working for Los Reals, they said interest-based alliance. That was where all the people came out in the whole district. And we stayed at a hotel, but we really talked about the things that were concerning to the whole school, I mean, the whole Los Reals college. And they had to work out those things, and they kind of like couldn't leave until they talked about the real issues. This is what has to happen in our district. Staff has to talk about the real issues that concern the community, because it is affecting our community. And it affects you as well as me, because you could go the safe way and be shot in the parking lot just as well as I can. And that's real. That's a real reality for most people who live in Sacramento. We have to do things differently. I don't care about the bond. My mom pays taxes too. She owns a house. I probably pay some taxes because I rent a house. But the whole thing is, is that people who live here have a right to benefit from the public service providers, and that's what I'd like to see the real conversation come down to. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson, can you just state your name for the record? You didn't say it when you came up.
Darlene Anderson. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Member, oh, member, Vice President Hanson. Getting mixed up on my numbers.
Just a, a few questions, and I know that this will be coming back to us. I'll get a chance to get some more information, but, you know, this obviously is not usually in the bailiwick of most school board members, so we have to rely on work that you do. But I understand, just talking to other folks that are in the business, that they were surprised that for such a low issuance of just a fourteen million dollar debt that we were, or, you know, for bonds, that the fees of seventy-one thousand for the financial advisor and seventy thousand for the bond disclosure fees was fairly high. Would you, is that, do you think, actually in the ballpark? Were they incorrect, or is that...
That's the fees that we charge all our, our clients, same as San Juan Unified.
Irregardless of whether it's a fourteen million or a ninety million dollar bond?
Yes. Yeah, that's correct. I, you know, at a certain point, bonds, they, they might become, you know, really small, and it, it definitely becomes difficult. But whether or not the bond is, you know, fourteen million, or thirty-five million, or eighty million, as far as we're concerned, it's just, it's time effort, it's the diligence, it's the standard of care. It's, there's a lot that goes into managing the bond, not just the issuance, but also the tax rates, the surveillance, the ongoing support that is required when you're putting a municipal security into the marketplace, and it lasts forever. So, the bond, the bonds that are issued, they're out there for twenty, twenty-five years for people to look at. So it requires us to be very careful. It requires us to be able to respond to any inquiries that we may have from any of our regulators, and make sure that we are maintaining our fiduciary relationship to the district and maintaining our, our standard of care that we do owe the district.
And might it be wiser for us to roll this into maybe the bond that we're doing in two thousand seventeen instead of doing one this year?
Yeah, and, and that is, actually, that is a great question. And the reason why we're, and usually, we don't issue bonds at Sacramento City Unified in, in the amount of fourteen million. Usually, the bonds are, are much larger, and that may be why it's catching your eye. The reason why we're coming forward with a fourteen million dollar issue now is because if we don't issue those bonds now, in sixteen seventeen, the actual tax rate will fall. And if it, if it falls, that's, those are tax collections that the district can't use to repay debt, to issue more debt. So, the district would actually be able to, would actually issue less debt, I think it's about three million dollars, than it would otherwise issue. It's, it's possible that over time, you make that up, but also over time, projects get more and more expensive. So, we don't, we want to maintain that tax rate at fifty-four dollars, so we can maximize the tax collections, which will ultimately minimize construction costs and, and actually the cost of the taxpayers.
My final question is the underwriter's fee for the par amount. I know it's stated it's point six. Understand that some fees could be as low as point three, and that point six to point seven is maybe more appropriate if there's, you know, if we have poor credit or something like that, which we don't have.
Yes.
Actually have quite excellent credit in the bond.
Yes, that is, that is what is in the resolution. The, the presentation has a fee of, I think it was fifty-six thousand dollars, which is basically forty basis points, point four instead of point six. For an issue this size, that, you know, we, we've done arm wrestling over that. That's actually a very good fee. I'm very comfortable, given my, my fiduciary relationship and my standard of care, with a fee of that size. I think that, that compares very well.
Thank you. Seeing no other board comment, thank you very much.
Thank you, and, and thank you for the questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Eleven point three. Approved request from the city of Sacramento to amend the joint use agreement at the School of Engineering and Science for the purpose of creating a pop-up dog park. Mr. Dobson?
So tonight, we will be continuing the discussion of amending the current joint use agreement for the purpose of creating a dog park. We will review the request from the city, identify the area proposed for the dog park, and review our discussion from April seventh board meeting. At the April seventh board meeting, the request from the city was presented before the board. At that time, it was decided that a survey of students, staff, and parents should be conducted. The survey had three simple questions. Identify yourself as a student, staff, or parent. Identify how frequently you use the park, and do you support a temporary dog park? The survey was conducted between April fourteenth and April nineteenth, and we received four hundred and eight responses. Next, we will identify the area of concern using the Sacramento County Assessor's parcel maps, a satellite view, and finally, identify the proposed dog park area. This is a screen capture from the assessor's parcel map. The two parcels in green represent the district-owned parcels, and the two parcels in red represent the city-owned parcels. And from this view, you can see the street network as well as the individual residential This is a satellite view of the School of Engineering and Sciences. The heavy red line represents the division between the city-owned parcels on the right and the district-owned parcels on the left. The yellow circle is the area that is proposed to be repurposed into a temporary dog park. The current arrangement provides for shared parking lots and athletic fields. Dogs are currently permitted in the park during non-school hours, but only while on leash. And the request is to remove the existing softball diamond and backstop and create a temporary off-leash dog park. Now for the survey results. So out of the four hundred and eight respondents, three hundred and forty-one were students, forty-nine were parents, and eighteen were staff. As far as the frequency goes, forty-one point five percent stated they use the park area at least monthly. Fifty-eight point five used it never or at least yearly. And the support for the dog park, fifty-five point two supported it, and forty-four point eight did not. Principal Hayes is with us tonight, and we'll be able to answer some more of your maybe detailed questions about that information as well. Currently, discussions are underway in the pocket area regarding establishing a community garden. It appears that the city is interested in establishing a garden behind the proposed dog park. But at this time, the district has not received any official request to amend that agreement. So if we look at the satellite view again, the area in the green circle would be the area that is being considered for the community garden. So the question tonight is, should the joint use agreement be amended to allow for a temporary pop-up dog park? If the board chooses yes, staff will negotiate a mutually agreeable amendment, and we will present that back to the board for action. If the answer is no, the community will still continue to be able to use the park during non-school hours, the dogs would only be permitted while they're on leash. That concludes the presentation. My colleagues, Area Assistant Tumua Carros and SES Principal Jim Hayes are here with me tonight to answer any questions you might have.
We have public comment.
We have two comments on this item from Berta Sorato and Darlene Anderson.
Good evening, board members. My name is Berta Sorato. I am a parent of four. Three have graduated from SES, one is currently a student there. I want to commend you for giving us Mr. Hayes permanently. We are very happy with Mr. Hayes. I just have a few comments and concerns regarding the, the dog park idea or issue. I'd like to have you consider other areas for the dog park. I don't know if this is working, but I'd like to put something up. First of all, the School of Science Engineering is still a very young and very new to the community. Our students and parents are still learning, along with the teachers, what works and what doesn't work as far as sports are concerned. We have very minimal sports opportunities, like other schools that are really well-established, like Kennedy and other high schools. So our small school of five hundred really is, right now, currently limited to volleyball, basketball, soccer. Again, we, these are all trial and errors, and they seem to be working for our kids. Baseball has not been an option that's been offered, which I'd like to see offered, potentially. The community garden is a great, great idea. We support that wholeheartedly. The dog park, we sat, I spent many hours at that school, more than, probably some teachers and some students. As a volunteer for the robotics team, we've spent many nights there, and we have seen the parents with their dogs and their families come late at night, they're off the leash, you know, there's no cleaning up after them. I also personally sat during a whole week and watched the park in the back. And I can tell you that we had probably about, my number showed, we had six people come with their pets off-leash while school was on. We had eight come in the evening, between the hours of four and eight, off the leash. So the leash is, people are just leaving their dogs, you know, unleashed and letting them roam around, not cleaning up after them. Some do, some don't. There is concern with the, with the cleanliness of the, of the area of the school that, that's really concerning for me, letting dogs just go without a leash and not cleaning up after With the growing concern of childhood obesity in our community, I really don't see a reason to take down... to take down the American sport of baseball. That diamond is used by other schools, other students in the community. There are other small parks just down the ways by Portuguese Park that could be used. There's another small frame of park that has plenty of shade and plenty of area to create the dog park. You know, the, 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 the questionnaire survey online, really, no disrespect to the school, however, when you put a cute dog up on, on, on the survey, you're going to have kids go, oh, you know, a dog park, yeah. Well, you know what? There's other things that contribute to concerns such as cost, you know, for the school. Will there be cost for the community surrounding it? We hope not. And again, if you're going to do this, you know, if it, if it does get approved, I ask that the board consider other options like providing us with a different alternate sport. Give us a track. Improve the lawn. The lawn is horrendous. There's holes and unsafe. Our students are limited, again, to soccer. And PE is terrible because they run out there and there's no really to run that safe. Too many gopher holes. And so sprained ankles, broken ankles. My daughter had a, you know, sprained ankle, broken toe. It just, it doesn't, doesn't jive with me. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
State your name for the record.
Darlene Anderson. Good evening, once again. Was, wanted to talk to you about the importance of, you know, building the school community and really engaging the families there. And I remember when we first started at SES, we had won the governor's sports equipment. You know, we had that huge gym that was, that we donated to Hiram Johnson, and we didn't get to use it at all. And so, you know, it was promised that we would do some other sports there. And we really have not worked on what we would do. And I think that the opportunity to, you know, really focus on a sport that would help develop kids and work with some of the obesity issues that we do have at SES, because we have a lot of kids who are not as healthy as they could be. But, you know, it really takes determination. And it's part of, I said on my PTA, and the PTA was not so happy about understanding, because he got the last-minute dog park thing, because I was at the, I didn't come to your last board meeting, but I watched online. And so I, I heard about having the opportunity to have a pool in the back there. And I thought that would be a great idea, because swimming is very, very healthy, and it could be a community pool, just like we have a community library on the land that Sac City owns. And so we agreed to let them have the front portion of the, you know, the area, and we would use this back area. The benefit to the back area would be that we could put a pool back there, and it could be a public pool. And we could have neighborhood kids and, you know, it would actually be a pool that benefits the whole community instead of having a dog park. There's dog parks in the area already. And the dangers of students getting bitten, well, I think that the, the district would take on that responsibility if a student got bit, because, you know, that happens when you have dogs. I just think that the community really didn't have an opportunity to have a dialogue, and it was, you know, it was, it was an ideal. And I'd like to thank PetSmart that donated the equipment, but I think we could find another area for a dog, pop-up dog park to go to. And really build more students attending science and engineering and offer a real sports program. Swimming would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Cochran?
Thank you. I have a question, Superintendent Moa. Is that the principal sitting next to you of the school? I have a question, so if you could come up. I, I'd like to know what you think. What do you think about this?
First of all, Jim Hayes, a very proud principal at SES. So as principal, my first thought is always for the safety of the students and the community. So when you start thinking about things like more dogs being in the area with students and potential hygiene issues, those are things that I think about. That being said, we did put the survey out there, and I'm also a steward of the community and the students and what they are saying. And from the survey, it seems that they, as a group, voted yes. So that's, that's where, where I am on the issue. I see myself as somebody that is for the students and for the community, and I will abide by that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dobson? It's stated to be a temporary dog park. So when, if it is decided that it will be a dog park, is there a term limit on this or how is this working?
This was a, a program that the city participated in. They received this, that's why they call it a pop-up dog park. It's meant to be a temporary facility. I cannot remember right now where the city just finished using it at. But the term in the agreement was for approximately one year, and at that time, it would be reassessed through community meetings. And if it was something that the community found value in and wanted it, then the city would try and identify funds to then create a permanent dog park in that area.
Okay. So thank you for your answer. I just want to state for the record that I am going to vote no on this, and this is why. Attorneys love dog bite cases. They absolutely love them. They usually win them. So I, I don't want to have dogs near children. I think it's a safety issue. I've personally seen dog attacks in dog parks. It's, you're off-leash, you're with a lot of dogs, they're pack animals. Also, I, I just, it doesn't stick well with me that we're tearing down a baseball diamond to have a community dog park. I want our school property to be used for the children, and I want the facilities to be up to par. And if they can't be, other ideas should be considered that should be for the benefit of the children. It also is a hygiene issue. As an educator myself, I have had to give spare pants and spare shirts to children who have come in with smears of dog dew on their clothing. So I, it's just a very practical vote and based on experience, and I wanted to explain my vote. Thank you.
Member Rodriguez?
I think Board Member Cochran did a very good job of.
Sorry, Member Rodriguez first. No. It's late.
Thank you, Member Rodriguez. I appreciate it. I heard incorrectly. I thought Member Cochran did an excellent job of expressing some of the concerns and questions I have. I actually put the stock of the principal's viewpoint very highly in terms of helping me to determine a decision. I'm curious, when I look at the, the responsive surveys, do we have a breakdown by constituency of where people fell? So we have 341 student respondents, 49 parent respondents, and 18 staff. Do we know where the 49 parents and staff fell as opposed to the students in the breakdown between support and don't support?
Yes, I have that information here. For the parents, the breakdown was 27% yes for, 73% against. For staff, it was 13% yes and 87% no.
Thank you so much. Oh, go ahead.
Students, students. And with the students, it was 61% yes and 39% no. That's a breakdown.
So, so thank you. I think that's very telling that, that the parents or families that took the survey, 73% were no, 87% of the staff were no, and then the students themselves were 61% in favor. I do think this idea that students might find the idea of cute dogs attractive definitely does come into play. To me, it's very telling when you have the preponderance of parents and staff saying they don't believe that this is the best solution at this time. And for that reason, and some of the concerns so beautifully articulated by Board Member Cochran, I will also be voting no this evening.
Member Rodriguez?
It's really me. I want to ask the survey questions. What kind of questions were posed? Was it dog park yes or no? Or was it, do you want a dog park? Or do you want a sports-related area? What kind of questions were posed during the survey?
It was just a short, three-question survey.
And those? And those questions were?
The questions were, who are you, student, staff, parent? How often do you use the field? And do you support a temporary dog park?
So you didn't put any alternative to a dog park?
No.
In the survey? I think that's where the survey was a little flawed, unfortunately. Because I think had students been given a choice of, do you want a dog park? Or do you want something that will better your school environment, like a athletic field or swimming pool or whatever that would be, you could have had them identify something other than the dog park, then I think the survey result would have been a little different. I'm not feeling comfortable with the questions that were asked of the survey and with good conscience. I don't think I could support this because of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Wu?
Thank you, President Britton. So the reason why I'm going to support this project is because it has already been made mention that the dogs currently run free on that property. And this is the opportunity to contain the, the, the animals within a confined area for the safety of the children. I think that the question of what alternatives might you want is not relevant, because that's not the question before us. The, the field is currently used as a soccer field, and yeah, I agree that we have gopher holes, and it's not necessarily the safest, and many of our schools have that problem, and the district is working on that now. So this is a temporary park, and the goal is to reach out into the community, the city's goal is to reach out into the community and find out whether or not they want this to remain there or some other use for the, for the land. So that's my comments.
Okay, so I have some great concern, and thank you, Member Wu, for letting us know about the dogs, you know, already roaming the area. I think at many of our schools, we go out after school hours, and we see dogs roaming off-leash all over, and owners not picking up the mess after them. It was a concern of mine from the beginning, do the kids use this area currently? Can you, can you re-bring it back to us? Do the kids use this area currently? And how often do they use this area?
Well.
You're not going to have it.
So the survey results for the frequency.
So I understand what the survey results, I guess I'm asking the, the principal. Yeah, what, how often are the kids out there? Do they have a PE class? Are they out there using the baseball field during the PE class?
On occasion. So I would say at any school, right? If you have a baseball field, it's not being used every day by PE, by baseball teams, et cetera, but it is used by PE. According to the students for this, they said 10% of the students said they use it daily, 11 said weekly, 20% said monthly, 28% said yearly, and 31% said never.
31% said never.
That's what it says.
Do you have a baseball team?
No. We're in engineering school.
Do engineers play baseball?
I was just, I'm, I'm sorry. It's been a rough day. Prince died today.
We're all getting punchy at this hour.
I apologize.
So if, if the kids wanted to play baseball, is there another area that they would be able to play?
There's only, there's only the one diamond.
And then the soccer field?
Correct.
I'm really torn, I'll tell you. What, I think Ellen asked, are you, are you, you're supporting this? You said that you are a community guy, and sorry, Member Hanson was just asking.
I, I was asked to, to put this together. I, I do believe in community. But again, as a principal, safety is, of course, my, my number-one deal. But that being said, you know, I'm, I'm very willing to go with the, with the will of the community and, and what needs to happen.
I just want to share that when I was first approached about this project, it was made clear at that time, and the city had done a little bit of homework, was that this was a field, a baseball diamond, that was not being used very often. And, and, and part of the rationale for putting a pop-up dog park, which would be a, a temporary, is because the community had already been using it, and I think they've been using it as a dog, sort of as a dog park for a while, for a number of years. We asked them at that time, do you, you know, what about some other area? And I guess their thing was that this is where the need was, and all the other available parks were going to be pretty, pretty far away from this location. So they're looking at serving the community, the community that was, had an interest in having a dog park. The, the, the challenge was that this was a field, but their, their counter to that would be it's not being used very often. We could, you know, repurpose it for now, use it as a dog park. And then if sometime in the future there was a need to have the field, then I would imagine as part of the MOU would be, that that would be returned back and, and put back into shape. But that, that was the whole idea. It was a community request, community project. But they, they did go about it the right way in terms of engaging the district and, and our, our facilities department, and then, and then approaching the school. So what's in front of you is for the, to allow the city to go ahead and repurpose that for a while and use it as a dog park. I don't know what the issues are now with not having a dog park and they have dogs out there. You know, they could be potentially running around without leashes, potentially being more of a problem than they would if they were contained.
This is my, my first year there, and during school hours, I can say that it's very rare to see people out there with dogs off-leash. That being said, 4:30, 5:00, 5:30, you know, there are quite a few dogs out there off-leash, playing fetch, yes.
Member Cochran?
So you would think, what I'm about to say, that I actually don't care for dogs, but that's not the case. I have familiarity with them. And if you create a dog park, you are creating a specific place where people come. There are very few people who actually have voice control over their dogs or able really to control their animals. It's, we all know and love dogs. We're humans, that's an ancient relationship, but it's around schoolchildren, and children and dogs that are not trained well do not mix. And I am 100% against this. Thank you.
Member Wu?
And so for the same reasons articulated by my colleague, Member Cochran, I think that the, the request by the city is reasonable, and it's an opportunity then to contain those animals that are running free. So I disagree with her.
I have one more question. Are you finished? I have, I have one more question. So we're saying that there won't be any dogs during school hours in this dog park had, is, is that not correct?
I didn't say that. We don't, we have not worked out if that was the board's wishes, we would go forward and negotiate that agreement. I mean, at this point, I mean, other dog parks are open, you know, sunup to sundown. We would have to negotiate specifically that the, the dog park could only be used after school hours if that was your wishes.
Who would be overseeing that?
I, I.
It would just be. It would just be a sign on it, so no one would be enforcing it?
Well, the current draft that they proposed has language in there that if there were any concerns or issues, we were to put those in writing and send them to the city. But again, that was their first draft. We would negotiate language that the board could approve, if that was your wishes.
So, another question for the principal. Sorry, tell me your name over time, so I don't just call you the principal.
It's Jim Hayes.
Thank you. Currently, do you see dogs out there during school hours off-leash? Or even on leash?
I've seen them on leash, for sure. I haven't seen anything that I would consider a safety concern during school hours. But there are a lot of kids, our students don't tend to leave school very quickly after school, they hang out for a very long time. So, after hours, I do see more activity back there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this just seems like to me, by putting a dog park, that we're kind of opening ourselves up to people coming at any time, rather than saying, oh, we'll wait till after school, right? And potentially having a problem. So, I guess my next question is maybe for the superintendent. Say that there are dogs out there, and something happens while a child is at school, and a dog bite happens, or a dog attack, who's responsible for that?
I wouldn't be able to answer that. I think, again, it would have to be part of MOU, and who's, and I think it's some of the wording that's in here for indemnification and things like that, and insurance. And I'm sure that, you know, once the city, if the city took that on as a project, that it would, liability and whatnot would rest with them.
Even though it's our property?
It's not our property. So, on the right-hand side of the red line, so the entrance to the school off of Gloria Drive, between the red and the blue line, and then the parking lot, and then the baseball field all the way up, that is the city-owned portion. There is currently a joint use agreement that covers how that is accessed, and who's responsible for different portions. But again, that would be something, we would negotiate that amendment on how that works.
So, they're just asking for that property back?
To repurpose it, yes.
I mean, I would like this had seen an MOU. I don't know if that would have been premature prior, you know, to this vote, knowing that, you know, we weren't, we wouldn't be responsible if there was a, if some kind of attack. Or, I mean, we hear on the news all the time about things happening. I've taken my own dogs to dog parks and have seen accidents happen at a dog park. So, I would have preferred to see an MOU, just to say, before we allow this on school property, that we know that we're not responsible. So, is that something that we could bring back before we approve this? Or am I putting the cart before the horse?
Madam President, so, the MOU is here in this particular folder, and it talks about indemnification and insurance. The district maintains property, and this is their proposal, this is a proposed MOU. District maintains property, liability, general liability, professional liability, automobile liability, employment practices liability, and workers' compensation and indemnity protection through school's insurance authority, California Joint Bowers Authority. The city maintains a self-insurance program, which includes procuring excess insurance coverage. City and the school's insurance authority on behalf of the district have entered into memorandum. So, it looks like there's some joint responsibilities on coverage.
I'm not sure what you're reading from. Is that the current MOU?
That is. That is the one.
Where are you reading it? Is it in our board packet?
It's, no, I don't know if it's in your packet. It's in my packet.
So, if there was an accident that happened, then it would be a joint liability?
Well, some of it's covered by them, and some of it's covered by us, it looks like.
How could that be, if it's their property, and it's their dog park? And if an accident happens, how could we have joint liability?
That would have to be a point of discussion with them.
No, we don't-
It was just for signature.
Yeah, we did it in our packet. Member Rodriguez.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't want to speak off the record, but I just want to say that, in all fairness, the board has not even looked at the MOU, and so you're asking for the board to take action on something that we haven't even read?
There was an MOU, the city's proposed MOU was included in last board meeting's packet, but then when we looked at it, that really the action that the board would be taking is to give direction to staff to go negotiate.
Negotiate, yeah.
That's why it wasn't included. Because it wasn't a negotiated agreement.
I, that makes sense, but again, you have to allow for the board to see that once again, because a lot of questions are coming up around here, and without the benefit of looking at that document again, it makes it difficult, and therefore, we're asking questions that should have been clearly laid out for a board member. Keep in mind that we don't go back to the prior board packet, not a lot of us do, and I'm pretty a well-studied board member, and I don't go back to prior board. You need to look up items. You have to provide the board with the information every single time. And even if that's, hey, we're just going to send it to you in an email to review before the board, that would even be acceptable.
Member Cochran.
Madam President, I'd like to move that we vote on this issue.
Okay. Is that a motion? Is it a motion? Yeah, is that a motion?
Yes.
Can you please state the motion?
I move that we vote on this issue.
On the, you have to state the whole?
The dog park. The pop-up dog park.
Thank you. Member Wu.
I have a, I have an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to move to approve the request from the city to amend the joint use agreement with the caveat that the, any final MOU, come back to the, to this board for final approval.
We have to vote on the first motion, and then go into a substitute?
No. You vote on the substitute motion first, and if it fails, then you vote on the first motion.
Well, the motion has to be either I move to approve, or I move to deny, and that wasn't the motion. So, the motion that is being presented to the board is a motion to approve with the condition or caveat that that doesn't mean you have approved the MOU. It just means it would be back for you to review the MOU to see if you approve it. If you don't approve that MOU, there's no deal. But I'll defer to the board president as to how you want to do this motion.
Okay, so, right on the table, I currently have a motion of the current wording that's in our board packet, and then I have a substitute motion.
Well, the action item doesn't really specify the type of motion, and you really cannot approve this item without the MOU. That's why it's being separated. It's really a motion to move forward, to get an MOU before the board to determine if you're going to approve that MOU. But if you don't approve that MOU, it doesn't happen.
Okay. Well, in all fairness to, you know, the city of Sacramento, and being, you know, good stewards of what we're doing, I know we've already pushed this action item off for another board meeting, but I think that it's fair that we continue this item, and then we work with the city on an MOU that protects us.
Well, I mean, that's-
I second Darrell's motion.
Yes.
All right. Now you have a motion for.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I think we better get a-
Oh, we need a roll call.
I think we need a better sense of what happened. Roll call would help.
My first one. Member Royal's absent. Member Cochran.
No.
Vice President Hanson.
Aye.
President Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Rodriguez.
No.
Second Vice President Ryan.
No.
Member Wu.
Aye.
We have three, three? Three in favor?
So, we push this off for?
Well, no action. If it's three, three, no action's been taken, one way or the other. So, now you could have another motion, but if it's a tie, it sounds like no action is taken on the item. The issue is, do you even, I don't even know if it comes back. That's up to you, if it even comes back.
Yeah. I think it's very clear that this is split, and if the city's intent on having this happen, they know the three board members to talk to if they want to have a different outcome. So, I think we're finished with this item, in my view.
Thank you very much. Item 12.0, business and financial information report. 12.1, business and financial information. We have received 12.2, Head Start, and early Head Start. We have public comment.
From Ms. Darlene Anderson.
Darlene Anderson. Thank you. For the Head Start issue and concern, and for, you know, the district's preschool, and since we're going to start taking in more preschool kids, I have real concern that Head Start takes all kids, and, you know, especially working in poverty. But our schools are still using the SARB office to put kids on a minimum day. And unless you have that data and good conscience, what are we really going to do when we bring in these young people who did not graduate from our schools, who have children, who do not have basic skills for parenting, and we're not offering parenting classes, but we are documenting young people? And that puts more children in, you know, foster care, because simply, a lot of people don't have skills to raise children. And it's through no fault of their own, they just started too early. And I believe that children have the ability to learn, and young people have the ability to learn too. But I believe that Head Start offers those programs to work with families, to help them get to the point of where they need to be, to become successful citizens. And so, I wanted to come and really just talk about that. If we're going to look at opening more childcare centers, or more early opportunities for children to have educational options, are we just going to open the door and start documenting those children too? To say that they are more dysfunctional? Because generationally, I would expect that to happen when you have children too early, and you don't have the skill set to raise those children, because, you know, although welfare reform happened, it happened, but it didn't happen with educational options. So, people still have children, and there's no way to ensure that those children, those young people know how to raise those children correctly. And so, I think that we really need to think about what we're doing when we go to move to a new direction, that we offer real services. And I thank you, and you ladies, and gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you. You as well. 13.0, future board meeting and dates, May 5, 2016, here at the same place, and May 19, 2016, also here. Item 14.0, adjournment.
We moved.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
A second.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Extinctions? We are adjourned.